We'll see, yeah. No.
Couple of years ago. Congratulations.
This is a workshop.
La Puccita.
How are you?
I thought he has a new job in case he needs it from the P L.
Oh, there you go, the spokesman, yeah.
There's the lineup. It was a great movie, great movie, actually. It was. When, uh, when it used to be a pretty nice. We'll sort out a more closed hall, cut the spaces. Space. Like a soccer game.
Yeah.
What, uh, that.
It's something good.
Usual suspects.
Three carrots.
Oh, yeah. Oh, what a great movie. That was wonderful.
Hey, I know the story behind the life.
A little bit.
Fundraiser.
It was brief, it wasn't that long. It was only three days.
Thank you.
It's unnerving, right?
Do you need the, no, you're doing it on your computer.
The what?
The clicker.
Oh, no, I'm good.
Put my hand before the back, before I use the bathroom.
Yeah, to leave it there.
I miss that, but I know.
Right here.
Or like one of those, that's a good one.
And we got out of water.
So, this is not displaying. Oh, this is zoomed to the.
I don't end up talking that loud.
The computer is like, okay.
Yes. That's perfect timing.
It's still not working.
Usually when I'm. You want to show me? Yes. But it should be showing, it should mirror because it's connected through the, to the projectors. Yes. Oh, that gives you like all the updates. Plug it and plug it back in. Maybe even try that first, but.
I said the agenda, not the backup.
We didn't have this problem last night.
So, in those, in those meetings, some of what we heard is definitely the recognition of stakeholders that this area has tremendous potential and that it presents some very interesting opportunities. They, they feel invested in improving those areas as part of the city, but at the same time, as I mentioned before, they feel somewhat marginalized under us, the city, whether it is because they're separated physically, there are barriers to integrating themselves into the city or because of just functional barriers. So, something that was mentioned a lot during those interviews by the hotels, especially had visitors that come to those hotels, they do want to venture into the city, but for them, especially in the Abraham tract, was nearly impossible. Whether you tried to do it by foot or by car, it's really difficult. And even on the Northwest thirty-sixth street side, there are challenges. You've got so much of a picture of the people that come to these hotels and for many, no, excuse me, for many of them, it is, it's a merit, it's targeted to corporate travelers, like, you know, self home states overnight, like, government employees, Southern Command, some spillover guests from the round hotels, airline contractors, and also families, because it is a very convenient location and the hotels that are here are not terribly expensive. With that said, even the stakeholders told us that they feel like these hotels need to be, or future hotels need to be a lot more family oriented in order to help effective change the character of the area and the kinds of hotels that come here, as some other interests. And in terms of challenges that they mentioned, there were, you know, sort of, very simplistically going into what I would call routine challenges that they face, you know, on a regular basis are related to effective stormwater management systems, so they get a lot of flooding, mobility challenges, issues related to safety, crime for their visitors, a lot of lack of useful or interesting destinations. And by useful, I mean places where they can go and get conveniences, for example, you know. I know when, when I visit a city and I stay at a hotel, I really love knowing that there's a grocery store or, or a pharmacy nearby that I can walk to, and those facilities are not available here. Issues with parking and issues with the process of, I mean, house, and then for those who are, you know, interested in developing property, some of the challenges that were mentioned included what they called burdensome processes and excessive regulatory constraints. So, that's for the first round of community engagement. Then in August, we had the workshop at the Adult Community Center, and unfortunately, that was the night where there was apparently a conflict from a bigger event and bad weather, or threatening weather, at least. And so, we had approximately twenty people who attended, but it was a crowd that generally was very positive in their reception to the ideas that were presented. So, we, because of the number of people that were there, which was limited, anticipated more, we opened a version of the workshop materials and questions in a digital form. We made it accessible via the city's website, and it was online from the second of this month to, as I mentioned yesterday. We did it in a very simple format, not the most sophisticated survey instrument, I realized that, but we were trying to get this out very quickly. I, I prepared the lot, the form, the date right after the workshop, and we're now trying to. And we're not trying to, you know, collect a statistical sample, but just really collect qualitative, mostly qualitative input. So this was a good way to do that. We have so far about forty people who have responded. And as I mentioned, we will be reopening surveys after this. So from the input that we received, I created a couple of workflouts. One of the questions that we had was about perception of the, of the corridor, of the, of the two areas. And we asked people to use three words to describe workflouts. You are familiar with them, the way that it works is that you have all the input. Basically thrown into this bowl, this digital bowl. And it gets sort of categorized by the number of mentions of certain words, right? And so in the cloud, the words that are larger are the ones that are mentioned the most. In, in that, in that sample of two of us. So you can see that thirty is the largest word. Crime is second largest. And then from there, we have hotels, money, needs, outdated, dangerous, unsafe drugs. And, and from there, you know, you could have a lot of different other words that are mentioned once or twice. But I would say that from what we have received so far. The vast majority of people who have participated so far in this process. Have a negative perception of the sport. Having said that, there are people who also recognize the potential. They know that, you know, it's just sort of untapped. And that there are things that could be done in order to ameliorate the, the situation. So to get a sense of their thoughts on, on that. The second question that we asked was with regards to what they saw as strengths and opportunities. And here, interestingly, you see the word hotels being the biggest. But that's not necessarily because people see hotels as a strength. They see this effort as an opportunity, often as an opportunity to get rid of the hotels. In some cases, some of the input that we had, and I will actually show you some specific quotes later. Just basically get rid of all the existing hotels and do not allow any more hotels. I think that we all understand that that's unrealistic. But, you know, I, I want to recognize the sentiment. And so this is why you see this here. Having said that. A lot of the input that we got on these questions had to do with the proximity of these areas to the airport. The proximity of these areas to new assets in the form of the soccer stadium. And everything that is happening and coming around that. You know, the potential for a hub for retail and conveniences. And, you know, improvements to infrastructure and to traffic patterns and so on. So it really is latent opportunity rather than things that are, you know, accessible today. And then on the flip side of that, we asked people to describe what they saw as challenges and weaknesses. And here, one more time, the largest number of mentions is which was through the hotels. And here, yes, definitely, the wording is always in, in the negative. They, they consider the residents of these hotels as a challenge because of the impacts that they have. And fears that, you know, their, their situation or the circumstances around them. Are in people's minds. People are also interested in issues related to parking sidewalks. Traffic, lack of landscaping, lack of lighting, lack of, you know, lots of black. But I wanted to just kind of put these, all of this in for this to fairly simple visual for you. Now, some highlights from these specific highlights from, from, from the input received of these issues. Just wanted to show you again, you know, interestingly that, you know, many of the. What the feedback that we're receiving contradicts each other. Some people say no more hotels. Whereas some people say, well, you know, we're next to the airport, we have these hotels, we need to leverage this. And improve this intervention so that we actually get more visitors. And some people said, you know, we need to pursue new, better hotels. So not a lot of agreement on that. Some people said, we don't want any housing in this area, but others said, we, we, we want mixed use. And mixed use includes housing. But there are lots of concerns around issue of residential uses. And so, you know, those, if we tackle them, need to be addressed in the process. People mentioned the. The goal of retaining small town feel of Miami Springs or crime and food lighting, those came up quite a bit. And then another question that we had was, you know, about the anticipated benefits of. Promoting the redevelopment of these areas, there was a list of choices. That people could select. And in this, this section of the survey. You can see that the vast majority of respondents chose the beautification, the visual appeal of the area, forty five, one five percent. And then having a balanced complement uses of uses with twenty two point seven percent as their top anticipated benefits. We talked the last time I was before you and we talked to the community about the concept of a public benefits program. And we asked people, if you, if you had such a program in place. To negotiate benefits to the community in the process of the building development. What kinds of benefits would you be interested in? This is not the whole list, but you know, some of the things that came up. People mentioned local jobs and business support, habitat conservation, improvement to the streets and sidewalks. And the streetscape furnishings, lighting, landscaping, parks. Pedestrian connections and then taxes and patrolling. And on this, oops, I'm sorry, that's a little typo there. But top priority, there was a question about top priorities or concerns about development, and we also had a list there. And from this one, you can see that top three concerns. Have to do with public safety, community identity, with the loss of community identity and potential for additional traffic. One of those has between ten and twenty six percent, and the rest of them have. Small percentages. Building physical health, infrastructures, sustainability, property values, infrastructure, etc. Now, we did not ask people in the survey and. We did ask at the workshop, but because this is not, you know, it's not apples to apples. And the survey, we did not ask people to enter their exact that, we just asked them to kind of tell us. Approximately where they live. And so we have just made an attempt to sort of group. And show you the magnitude of, of the number of people who participated from the different parts of the cities. And we have had the most diverse section, as you can see. It also took some demographics, just to understand who has been participating. And it's, you know, it's fairly. Fairly equal between three age groups. With the segment or the cohort between thirty five and sixty four years. Being the highest, thirty one percent. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, I think that's, that's a typo, right? But the percentage is correct. But the, the, the label is, is.
Eighteen through.
Eighteen through.
Eighteen to twenty six, that's my number.
Yeah, I'll go back and, I'll go back and check it, but, but I believe that's the one that is missing.
And this is just of the survey?
This is just for the survey.
And what was the N on the survey so far? What, what is the total number of surveys?
We have forty respondents. We also asked people how long they have been living in the city. And as you can see, the vast majority of respondents have been in the city for more than twenty years. Followed by those who have been in the city anywhere between ten and twenty years. And then, you know, between five and. So for me, generally, even though there's no real consensus in all the responses. What I kind of got as takeaway is that people want us to be planning for change, but they're not necessarily against change. We just need to recognize that city needs to evolve. And that that has to be done in a controlled manner. And that doing that so that the visual and cultural qualities that residents of Miami bring value. Our safeguarding is going to be very critical. So I, I think the last time I did talk to you about the need to balance. Three kind of difficult issues. One was maximize some public benefits while we provide incentives and remove barriers to redevelopment and development. And also minimizing impact of that development on the community. So that's still what we're going to try to do, is not an easy task. But this is, this is the goal. So with that, what I'm going to do, what I would like to do, that is acceptable to you all is like. Kind of categorize my recommendations into three different groupings. The first is one I'm calling essential actions. And those are items that I think that we need to do. Regardless whether we pursue the sub-some structure and do anything else. And then we have the zone by zone strategies. And as I said, I think what I, what I would like to do tonight is try to get through zone one and zone four. And then I have some additional recommendations for other things that need to happen. In order to make some of these other things possible. So. What I'm calling essential action one, I think it's going to be really important for us to look at the current procedures or lack thereof. In some cases, and streamline them, clarify the. Perhaps this first one is for a longer term issue, but something that we were talking about actually with Erica. Today is that, you know, the city lacks the ability to take applications and payment. For development applications online. It's, 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 in my mind, it's actually a little unsafe because like, you know, I'm not a city employee. I have an email address with the city, but developers are sending me applications to my email address. Sometimes they don't send it to the city, I have to make sure that I provide it to the city. So if there was a centralized place for that to happen, not only would that be. Better for the city, but also it would be better for the other. So that's something that, you know, I'm just kind of recommending that maybe the city look at. At some point, there's lots of platforms that take applications.
Don't stop and speak to that?
I'm sorry?
Can we stop and speak to that? J C, is that, is that, so that's your recommendation, what with respect to the building and zoning and what we've traditionally done? And apparently this is a barrier to development?
It's just an inconvenience.
It's, it's an inconvenience and, and well, honestly, it's where we should be going. We do have, a number of years ago, the, the building department, we purchased.
E-tracked.
E-tracked. The electronic one, full out submission. For whatever reason, it was never really taken out a second here. And so now we have, we've been working with the, the, what? The software developer to fix it and make it.
Probably have some lead right there.
No, no, they, they.
There are portions of that program. My understanding is like one of the first discussions that I have on, on the team here. That there were like modules within that platform that the company did no longer service. And so that's one of the reasons why the city was not able to make it work, but that may not change.
In your experience, what platform do other municipalities?
E-tracked it new successfully. My legs, for example.
Which is the one we had, E-tracked.
Those modules. Type of thing, so it's just a matter of working like what J C had said, is working with, we're working with them now to kind of. Get back into having the correct modules in place.
What were these purchased?
This was purchased.
Years ago. You're, yeah, at least, at least five years ago. And what happened was is it, we had a large turnaround in personnel. And it went live too soon and it wasn't ready to go live. So we had to kind of retrack it and take it offline. In doing so, we've gone through several. Project managers, if you call them, on their side, on Central Square side. And I think we finally are getting to the point where we have a good team in place that we can get it moving forward.
But it seems like that recommendation is to say that we should evaluate. Platforms to perhaps replace, is that?
I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to suggest that the city go over the different programming. They, they have one that is about to become functional.
Yeah, I, I don't, yeah, I don't want to go to the expense of getting an old new platform. However, this, this one here, I'm willing to believe. I was then told me will work. And so I'm going to see this all the way through there, we're working with them, we're finishing this up, not at any charge, any cost to us. With, with, with the company, you know, Central Square, finishing that up and. But, but I have, but I have mentioned to you, I mean, I guess the whole, the entire city's ERP really needs to be looked at. Something that frustrates myself personally. And it's something that we really need to, to talk about sooner than later, but.
So I want to, I want to preemptively apologize, right? Because like to this point, because we, you know, we're getting the feedback based on. This pretty significant analysis and all the work that's been done by CBA that we, we, we made CBA to do for us. And it's been a lot of just ideas who, you know, I don't want to say it's like spray and praise, but it, well. I feel like we're getting to the point now where we need to have consensus and give direction. So because this is the first slide and says essential action. I'm going to scrutinize each bullet so that we can, right? Like, I don't want to, I don't want to just gloss over things and go over bullets. So if that's an essential action, so we've got a, a platform for electronic submission that we have had and haven't been utilizing.
Hasn't been utilized.
Right.
That's something that I've been working on, I started here, all right.
And maybe just to clarify, I, I, I was aware that there was, there was a program, a platform that the city had purchased. And also that. And uh also that they had not been functional. I did not know that we were having, you know, new conversations with that. So. Uh my understanding when I put this together was that, you know, that was uh dead, but if it is not.
Do you wanna elaborate on the online payment and centralized review? I I always say this because I'm not a the, I'm the furthest thing from the development world, right? But I have heard from people who have experienced, who are in the development world, who have said that. Sometimes it's cumbersome to work with uh with the city of Miami Springs from from the point of view of develop, right? So when I see uh and in terms of streamlining procedures, centralized review, you know, digital submission online payment, I. You know, I'm gonna kind of rely on you guys like what like a self-assessment. So do you wanna elaborate on centralized review, online payment? What are we talking about?
If if I if I may add just a few things to that, um the central this program. Or reviews and and everything, the way it's supposed to work or the operational is. Gets submitted and then that automatically wraps into the different disciplines.
Exactly. And I think that's one of the most important things.
Because now it's very manual.
Yeah, I mean, like I can manage in the development. Uh uh I can manage uh the review on my side with my team. You sort of like being able to control, like say, okay, this is if this is your deadline and the files are all here. And everybody has to work on these files and put your reviews here. But at this, at the city, I don't have that ability to coordinate. Because we don't have a place, a central place where everybody has access to the plans. And everybody is looking at them in real time uh together, right? Uh so uh I I think that that feature is very important to uh streamline the developer review process.
I mean, along with that process, that that module also contains the electronic payments that can be made online. Once the uh plans are are approved, if the plans are disapproved by any one of the uh. You know, building or planning or any of those, they're able to address those comments. And uh one of the new features that we're really trying to integrate with this is that we're trying to bring in that we can automatically send those plans. To Miami-Dade County and we'll get that input and feedback from Miami-Dade County, which will also save. Significant amount of time for the residents because it they won't have to take those plans down themselves.
I just wanna make one certification because of the stage that Tammy's referring to. Which which I think is gonna make a big difference. This is more the building firm's stage. What I'm talking about is the point at which a developer or property owner come in and say, I I need to apply for variance. And they have to, you know, put together a package. And they email it to us and if it is too large, maybe it doesn't go through, they have to do it again using a Dropbox link. Uh and uh you know, sometimes they have to come here and pay or they can pay by phone and it's confusing and. Uh and then, you know, we have to manually um share the plans with everybody who's going to be involved in those reviews. Which are, you know, before the building permit, obviously. Uh and so, you know, I just wanna make sure that it's clear that I'm talking about a different stage than the building firm. And although that platform is also going to be uh extremely beneficial in expediting the your building permits.
That this applies just citywide, not just the southeast spring.
Correct, correct.
This applies citywide, not just the southeast springs, right? And and with the the city looked like that uh that painting there, you know, there would, you know, I I think that. Our processes may have been sufficient in a slitty little town. That's mostly a single-family residential, but as we talk about how we can. That corner over there that just looks like a green field back back then and that then. As we talk about these areas and we want to promote uh revitalization and development and growth. These kinds of processes that run, you know, that that make it a little cumbersome process. I think that is, I think it's important to evaluate how that can be better because it's. At the heart of our work, I mean, did you wanna uh chime in? You had started to say something and you have experience in this world, so I encourage you to.
Yeah, no, I was, I mean, you were referring to something similar, City of Miami has iBuild.
Yeah, it might be.
Uh I was just making reference to City of Miami, they have a similar system called iBuild. Where everybody creates an account and once you put it, it gets automatically true that it's a good access process.
So you agree?
Is it is it just that, not just generally speaking, if if, because we're talking about streamlining procedures? Is this something that just makes things take longer or is it something that in your opinion can frustrate? Development to the point that it's like just like, you know, what's the point like what?
If, I mean, if I made a bit, it. What it does is the way the system is, it lends itself to make mistakes. It lends itself to something getting missed. Always to the cracks. Just something simple, you know, the recent change that that I made prior, and this has not 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 just developed. If somebody comes in here to pay for a building, you have to go into the into the the building department. Get the receipt, go downstairs to the to the cashier, come back after get firm. I understand if you're paying cash, you want to centralize. With credit card, so I I agree, we put all credit card machines up. Alright, so they they. They have um, we have the credit card machines up here, so don't have to go up. Just little things like that. And then if you automate the system, centralizing the system, the the way that this program can. Ultimately do. You know, they think it'll just make things easier, that's just not for developers or for anybody that wants to build it.
Right. Payment side, it's going to make it easier for the city to track the payments. Post recovery accounts that, you know, your attorney and like yours and myself. Charge to those developers put money into them. Right now, it's much harder to figure out where those accounts are, you know, we, I I don't have access to them, so I don't know. Like if um. In in um general terms in the code, if the account is below a certain level. We should not continue until it is replenished, but I don't know whether it is below that level or not. And I have to ask Sandra, she has to go to find it. So I mean, like, there's too many steps.
It's cumbersome.
It is, but not, so so the steps that are cumbersome for us ultimately end up being cumbersome for them.
Right, and it's cumbersome to pull a permit for a fence is one thing, you can get in the car and you get right over it. But if you're a person who is, you know, looking into development on a on a larger scale. Then it being cumbersome works against us.
Yeah, but even for the first.
Time is money and it works against the goals that that we have for areas such as the.
Even for the person who is only applying for a fence, but we tell you because. I feel bad when people take time of their day to come and talk to me and the meeting is fifteen minutes. You know, it's like, we could have done this off the phone. Uh but I think people.
The person who prefers is still gonna get the fence. Where I don't have to fight against the city in order to invest in.
Right, right, absolutely. Alright, so that was, you know, it's not a, it's not a critique. That I was trying to make is simply, you know, a reality, because I think that is a factor that if if alleviated and helped, it's one of a number. One, this is a possibility. I'm not suggesting that, you know, we need to do this, but you know, we could look into whether there are certain types of projects. Where we could adopt pattern book to help expedite the review.
What's a pattern book?
It's basically uh sort of, it provides a template for what a certain kinds of projects could look like, right? In in their in their basis. And so if it meets the criteria, we know we're we're just gonna go like check, 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 check. There's gonna be still certain things that we need to make sure. Uh that are gonna be, you know, uh um very unique to the project, but there are gonna be a lot of other things. Where having the the pattern book and knowing that the project needs the criteria. From that pattern book is going to expedite the review of projects. So that could be another tool. Uh I, this is not just for, you know, the seventy six tree work or Abraham trapped. But the notice requirements in the city are super complicated, super cumbersome. And they're not all, they vary from, you know, I think that we have your attorneys here and you you will back me. That uh uh and Heidi certainly, you know, we're talking about notice requirements. Uh they are uh extremely cumbersome in some cases. And I think that we really need to look at those and need to uh consolidate them where we can, make them consistent across the board. Uh as long as we're meeting, you know, any statutory requirements, but try and simplify them. Uh uh I'm not suggesting that we try to like get get someone, you know, not to have to do notice. That's not what I'm suggesting at all, but you know, uh in in regulatory environments. Um it is important to have consistency. Uh not just for the local government and the planners who review development. But for property owners or the developers uh to have uh certainty. Like, you know, and you know that this is the way it's gonna be. It's not like, you know, you have to dig into seven different parts. Of the code to find what you need to do. So that's, that is a recommendation that I am making. The pattern book is something that, you know, we could consider. You know, we can look into whether that is something that could work here. I haven't done that analysis yet, but I, the notice department, I definitely uh recommend that 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 is done.
Um yes, if I can just add one thing on the on the notice requirement so the council and the public understands. In as as a city attorney and and as developers counsel, depending on on. Regardless of whether you're representing the city or a developer, you wanna be able to go through your code. And quickly and easily understand who do you have to notice about the potential project, whatever the project scope may be. Um it is not as straightforward as it could be, absolutely not straightforward as it could be. But in addition to the code requirements that the city of Miami Springs has, you actually have a requirement for notice in your charter. And so as you think about what may need to be adjusted or changed. Your charter actually requires you um on certain types of zoning application. And the one I'm referring to is just when you're changing the existing zoning classification of a property. Uh which Ed, I and Sylvia would call a rezoning. Okay, if you're doing a rezoning, you have to send mailed notice to all of the city's electors. Not all of the city's property owners, but all the city's electors. And so as we know, not all the electors are property owners, not all property owners are electors, right?
And some houses have more than one electorate.
Correct. So we implementing that as whether it's the city. Um that is sending out those notices or whether we delegate that responsibility to the applicant. It it is burdensome and it's expensive and it's time consuming. And so when you think about access, whether you are an individual who needs to adjust something on your individual property. You know, you're not a big developer, or if you're a big developer, it's a huge expense.
I just uh to add to what Heidi was saying, I was gonna give you an example, uh hmm. Year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, there was uh an actual rezoning application. We don't get too many of those, but you know, once in a while. And in that case, I think that they have to send out twelve thousand. Uh no, like.
Nine thousand, nine thousand eight hundred.
Nine thousand letters, yeah, nine thousand letters. And that was not the only requirement, because the code also says that in addition to that, you also have to send out notice. Within a certain radius to the property owners from your bar. And so it's not just one requirement, it's two and sometimes three. So that's just to give you a sense of how difficult it might be. Um another example, yesterday, my colleague Josh was in um and and um. Ed were here uh for um uh historic preservation board uh hearing or meeting. And um like two days ago, we were still trying to figure out who we needed to, you know, to notice or not. It's kind of unclear. Um and the code has many such instances, so unclear language or overly uh cumbersome requirements, so.
So whereas that pattern books are kind of optional, it seems like simplified notice requirements is really essential.
I, yes.
So and I I'll, again, I wanna love this, if I'm like they having trouble getting access to the civic plus. Uh and in order, and I was under the impression that the backup was there, we weren't, we weren't giving a copy of the backup, so it would have been.
There's no, no, the backup was not uh finished in time.
I always say this because and I'm, you know, just peripherally looking at my colleagues and we're all like writing down notes. I have a feeling that we're gonna cover a lot at this workshop and we're kind of like.
That's 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 on me. It it I didn't get to have it ready for you because I was still.
I'm trying to think score of one, you know, so then.
You will have, you will have the presentation.
Okay.
You will get it later today as a PDF. You don't, you don't have to take too many notes.
Okay.
Um the other thing that I would suggest, actually two things that I would suggest with regards to potential for administrative. Processes, we don't have a lot of those in the code. Uh but I think it might be uh, it might be uh worth it to uh consider. Whether there are some minor cycland or cycland modifications that could undergo. An administrative review if they meet. A li- a list, a framework of criteria. So it would not be like, oh, you know, I'm just gonna make it up and, you know. Sylvia is going to review it in the back office without, you know, without consistency. But we create the framework uh of whether it is, you know, we know the cycland uh uh. The 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 provisions and standards, those are in the code for the zoning district. But there might be other criteria, other standards that, you know, we set the framework that every time we review one of these minor cyclands. We know these, we need to hit these different levels. And in an administrative process, it could go a lot fast. Uh we would have to figure out what a minor cycland is here. Is different in every municipality, the scale of level that you get, you guys get is different from other municipalities that. Uh Heidi and I worked on uh working, so uh we would have to go through the process of determining that. Uh the other administrative um issue uh that I know here is that. Uh your code doesn't have the ability to uh make adjustments via the administrative rep. Everything has to be a variance that goes through um a public uh hearing process. Uh there are ways in which you can decide that it some some uh. Deviations from the code that fall under a certain threshold can be reviewed administratively against. It once once more against a framework that is already in place that we know that we are going to be consistently applied to. So uh I would suggest that these, you know, in in the case of these two items that, you know. You allow us to evaluate whether they can work here. But those two would create a way for certain kinds of development to be able to go faster. Through the process and for a less than cost. Uh cost is always going to be a consideration for a property, whether it is a large developer. The other thing, and this is relatively easy, is that I would love to be able to convert some of your uh. Text uh from your code into summary tables. And to add some graphics to make it easier, not just for developers who are sophisticated or that are, you know, used to. Dealing with zoning regulations, but for the single-family residential property owner to better understand. What we mean in certain terms, certain provisions. Uh I'm not necessarily suggesting that we tackle the entire code at this time. Uh you know, our scope, although I I really want to. Uh, but, uh, the scope right now is for these two districts and we can do it there, so you can see how. I hope much better it would be to have these two tools be part of the flow of the code. Um, and then finally, this is not necessarily something that would result in streamlined, actually adding one. More requirement, but I think it's important, uh, ultimately can help to streamline a process. Uh, I am recommending that we adopted to the code a requirement for a community meeting. That would be the responsibility of a developer, uh, to organize and hold with. The neighborhood, the community, we can, we can figure out what that means, um. When there's a sideline tool, and that would have to happen pretty early in the process, so, uh, they would have to go out there. Present the project, talk to the community, kind of, you know, discuss it. And then we can go through the rest of the formal review and.
How common is that, what would the criteria be for a project to, to have to do? To have to meet that kind of requirement, what, what is typically the criteria for a project, if that's what you have in place.
I think that, that we can, we can, once we can define what, like, if, if, if this is the direction that you guys give us. If, if we define what a minor side plan is, for example, that could be a concern from having to do that. But anything above that would have to do it, a variance would not, you know, obviously, that's, that's so. Also judicial and would have its own notice with the public hearings and, and so with the side plan. But with the side plan, I think that it would ultimately help to save, um, um, an applicant time. Because people tend to show up towards the end to the public hearings. And then express objections, and sometimes resulting changes that at that point, that much more difficult to accomplish. And much more expensive and sometimes impossible to get to an agreement with, uh, the community. So doing that step very early in the process can actually be a time and a money saver for.
It, it strikes me that there, there's an average effect to things like this when we're using the word cumbersome. Uh, and again, when we take a big picture view of what we wanna see for that area. These things left unaddressed, right, not that we have to go kind of word for word and then we're not saying we're gonna adopt everything. But I think that this is an important thing, because there is an effect. Uh, again, like the councilman said, time is money and, and, and the type of involvement that we're. That we're trying to attract these kinds of big stand in the way.
It's cumulative, you know, that's what it is, you, you lose a little bit of time here, you lose a little bit of time there, and, you know, all of a sudden, you have, you know, like two months. Of additional time that you're spending in the process.
I, I, I remember in my time up here, projects that have been considered, talked about, sorry, stop, and then finally they're like. But I, I know that that has happened, so it, it hasn't.
Yeah, but, you know, that now you just reminded me of something that I did not put on my slide, but I, I would like to suggest that it's probably important to do so. Your code doesn't have provision for the expiration of a development order. In other words, so council something, something notices, uh, you go through a second pool. You, you go, you know, the applicant goes through a second pool, the council approves a project, a resolution is. Um, it's executed, and then the applicant is going to take ten years. Uh, to apply for a building permit, because there's nothing in the code that says that you lose. That development order. And so, uh, I was gonna suggest that something that we need to think about is putting some sort of timeframe. Uh, of validity for that development order, uh. Two years is common in other places with the ability to extend one, two, uh, to three years. Um, and that's usually done, you know, with the, uh, with the blessing of the council. So it's not like, you know, you're not gonna know that that is happening, but, you know, um. That's, that's something else that is a little bit separate from.
So before we move on from this, right, I, it, again, some of these things are. Yeah, so you mentioned like, you know, adopting pattern books is something that could help, uh, but, and I'm assuming that some of these bullets, if you try to execute it. You have to, it's a, it's a more involved project, right, uh, but. Taken as a whole, uh, these procedures do, I mean, are we all in agreement that? That that should be something that we should tackle, that, that Sylvia should come back to us with concrete. Uh, changes that we're gonna make and adjustments that we're gonna make to the procedures to try to make, you know, grease the skids. I guess, as I would say.
Who cares, yes, I, I, I like to, I think we're looking at parallel. What Sylvia's doing is one thing, I think we should be looking at a parallel plan for the city to handle what we think is coming. That's building, that's administrative, and I'm worrying that we open floodgates and say, lack of a better word, and we can't handle it. So now we, now we're, now we're having adversarial relationship with these possible tenants, developers. And that's where I'm, I'm kind of thinking.
I've heard from people again, I, I don't know, but I've heard from people that say like, it's not even worth, you know.
How do we, right, we, we need a parallel plan to, to handle what we think is coming. And, and that's gotta.
Take a little while, like, you know, you, you can go through the process of crafting these regulations and adopting them and it's, you know. I mean, I don't know, maybe, maybe will, but you know, like, they're gonna be knocking, like, knocking down the doors, maybe, but you know, I.
Right, you can think ahead and say, let's have the pieces in place to handle this, streamlining, not fast tracking, because that's something else, but. Right, but just, um, efficiencies, you know, to look at that.
And, and I think Sylvia mentioned the cumulative effect, right, there. I think that all of, all of these things serve as areas, again, like, one of our greatest assets, we, it was at the genesis. Of us wanting to tackle this is location, 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 we, there. There's development happening all around us, we are part of, this is Miami-Dade County, and we have assets and, and I. I get the sense that we've been overlooked and that people are, are not, uh. Uh, it's such, so burdensome and so cumbersome that we, again, get overlooked. In terms of the opportunity to take advantage of people investing, so I think that. It, it seems important to, to me.
Who's the chair, um, know about how long would it take to, uh, get this developed, and when can we start?
Well, so there are some things that are not for me to do, obviously, the, the, the digital submissions, et cetera. City's working on that already, I don't know what the timeline is. Uh, I, I would say that, uh, the, uh, notice requirements, administrative review, administrative adjustment. Uh, the conversion of tables, those could be done, like, in, in pieces, you know, uh. It's not my preference to do it that way, but, uh, I know.
I'm laughing because she always says it's, she, she wants to do the proper heads.
I, I like to do quotes holistically, because it's, it's better to have, you know, an understanding of how things connect to each other. But the notice requirements, I, we've been thinking about it for quite a while, and I think that we can do that fairly quickly. Uh, the administrator review is gonna take a little bit longer, because we need to, again, sort of evaluate what kinds of projects can. Fall under a certain threshold and which ones can fall, should fall under that, you know, that higher, uh, review, uh, standard. And the administrative adjustment, I think, can be very, you know, I mean, like, I'm not gonna be really bragging the wheel, and there are. Only certain things that can be done that way, for instance, uh, you know, a variance for a setback, you know. If it falls, if it is only like, I don't know, ten percent or twenty percent of the base requirement. Then you can, you can do administrative, for example, that's one, 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 um, uh, standard. Uh, that many other communities have, and so, you know, we're just gonna look at what could work here, you know, it could be for setbacks. It could be for, um, you know, we'll see what, what other things we do.
Sylvia, can you go back to the timeline, a second, a couple of slides back?
Sure. That is okay.
Alright, so I think that, when I think about this timeline, uh, part, part of the problem that I think as, as a council, we're aware of. Is that we have, we have a finite amount of time, right, and, and I think that that historically, that's been part of the problem. Is that we can't tackle big issues, because every two years, the council is changing, things are changing, people are running. Things are like, and so we can never, we're always putting out fires and things that are urgent, but the things that are important that. That get overlooked, so you, you've made this, this process timeline. So that it kind of aligns to something that we're trying to do while we're here.
Yes.
As, as a county, and then, and until things change, but things are gonna change anyways, the only constant is change, so if we're gonna get anything done. We need to focus on the things that you should get done, so if you go back to that slide, I think that the direction I'd like to ask my colleague. The direction should be, if it's something that's very comprehensive, that means that we're gonna have to budget like for a whole new project that's going to take. If, if it's going to detract from, we're gonna try to take a bite out of the apple and make sure, and I, I've mentioned this publicly, right? We, sometimes we get caught up in the sense of like, oh, we're gonna have one shot at this and we gotta hit it out of the park and that of. Seven run homerun, which doesn't exist, right, whereas I think that as a council, we are here for two, I'm gonna go, I'm definitely gonna be here for two years. And then we'll see what, what ends up happening after that, but we need to. Uh, pick our battles, get on base and move the ball forward, so I think that the direction should be that those things that you feel. Are not going to detract from what we're trying to get done holistically as part of that timeline. We, you should come back to us with, hey, we're gonna do these things from these bullets.
I was just gonna suggest that, you know, since we're going to meet again on the sixth, I would prioritize.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, these, uh, recommendations, and, um, I can tell you that, you know, that. There are lots of things in this presentation that have to do with making changes to the code.
Right.
And, you know, that's something I expected, now, I didn't know what changes we were gonna make when we started, and that's where things can. Sort of get derailed in this timeline, right, because when, when, when I start, I kind of have a sense of. What we're gonna try to do, but, you know, I don't know what I don't know when we start, so, um, uh. At this point, I, I have a better sense, it's still not a hundred percent, um, for example, you know, I come up with this. Notion that perhaps a pattern book would be helpful, uh, but a pattern book has to be prepared, and it takes time, right? Uh, and it takes more time to do that than to do some of these other changes to the code, so I would suggest that that's something that, for example. Would fall a little bit lower in the, in the priorities. Uh, whereas the other things, the, the notice requirements of the, uh, those, the sort of evaluation of the, uh, uh, the, the. Side plan processes to see where we can do some of those administratively without, you know, to. Stepping on.
So for this six, if you have our direction, you will prioritize the things that we are going to tackle. When we, you know, we set you loose to, to start, to start making these changes. Okay, well, so.
Neither can I.
She's gonna prioritize, so that on the six, we'll know exactly what it is that you're working on from the. Okay.
Mayor, if I can add.
Sure, go ahead, council.
So what exactly would be, I, I understand, some of them are more granular, like changing effects to, which I, I agree, but. I agree with the mayor, we need to focus on the, the broad strokes, because if that doesn't pass, then everything else, really doesn't matter at this point.
So what I was gonna say is that, you know, uh, uh. The big picture is implemented in policy, but it also gets implemented in these states. And so I think that, you know, we're going to, as we go through, we're gonna see, uh, you know, how. That granular part connects to the bigger picture, um, and it has to happen sort of at the same time.
Go hands ahead.
Right, but the, the perfect is the enemy, the good, so if I'm wondering, if I'm counting correctly, you have our consensus to pick those things. That will not derail the bigger picture is to get, you know, something significantly done.
Sure.
And accomplish that will all help in service of.
Right.
Mayor, just, I just have one, one thing to add on that last slide, um, that we didn't talk about. But your zoning and planning board and your board of adjustment, you currently have two boards. So one deals with variances, another looks at site plans, it's the same people sitting on two boards. And we have two different meetings and it's usually back to back. Um, so one of the things that I had started before Sylvia joined, unfortunately. Again, we're always putting on fire, right, so I had started trying to put together a code, uh, amendment. To consolidate those two boards, most cities have this planning zoning board, E Z B. And they address all of these things in one hearing, uh, and so it's just, you know, just efficiencies that we're trying to look at. To streamline this process, and as we have learned, um. Through experience, uh, some of these. Inefficiencies in the code and lack of clarity lead to other issues that are costly. Um, so I think I, I hear you on the big picture and the Southeast Springs project, but I think this is very essential.
Yeah, uh, I, there were two bullets that we discussed that weren't on there, and which is why I kind of like wish that we had in front of us. But I want, I wanna hold this to that, um, when we meet on the six, it shouldn't take a long time, but, uh, you should have. We're giving you direction to, to add those two things and like, hey, these are the things that are going to get done as part of this at that that we have. We're, we're, we're going to get that accomplished. I had the expiration of development order and, and the redundancy of zoning and planning and a board of adjustments. Those are two things that sounds to me, uh, are easy to fix, would help streamline, weren't on this slide. But, but will be part of the recommendations you make.
Regarding the expiration of the development order, that kind of goes to another recommendation that I have, which is, is coming. Uh, but I think that we could do that one very, very easy, because the expiration of development order falls under. Uh, you know, not just, um, uh, the, um, the code requirements, but you know, we have that process that we adopted. In the gateway district for, uh, development agreement, and one of my recommendations is that we do that here, that. Ideally, we take that out of the gateway and we put it in the procedures section, and we can do that. Uh, but, you know, that, that's basically done, we're not gonna reinvent the wheel, it works there, it works here.
Uh, we are, we're, you have our direction to, to pick, pick the things that are gonna give us the most return. On our investment in, in, in these changes that we're about.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, well, the things that, good point, the things that we have the bandwidth for, that we will, that will get done, that will.
Alright, so. So the, uh, second action has to do with revamping the incentives in the North of the six district. And the Abraham Tract, as you know, there is in both of those, and it's, uh, uh, an F A R bonus program. And my recommendation is that we eliminate that bonus, uh, program. Uh, and replace it with something different, the first thing that, uh, comes out of that is, I'm suggesting. This is, uh, somewhat of an incentive, uh, to go to, from floor area ratio, F A R. To a concept that is called floor lot ratio, F L R, uh, and that, uh, concept. It's, it's the same idea, but whereas F A R includes, uh, parking, structural parking. In the calculation, F L R does not, and I think that that can be especially for many of the small parcels that we have. In this quarter, uh, could be a good incentive, because, um, if you think of. The project as a box, the development as a box, where you're trying to fit all this stuff, you're trying to stuff all that stuff in there. And your parking takes up a lot of your floor area. Then you, as a developer. Then you, as a developer, are not being able to maximize. The return investment, because in addition to picking up space, well. Building parking is extremely expensive. Structure parking is extremely expensive. So this is one way of uh, reducing another barrier or another challenge. Uh, and making it more attractive for a developer looking at Miami Springs to say, oh, okay. Here, you know, I'm gonna get a little more return on investment. Uh, so that's my recommendation to uh, go to F L R and to the parking uh, structural parking from the calculation of F L R. Uh, I'm also suggesting establishing, just instead of the bonus. F A R program, just. Establish a new base, you know, right now, the base of they are is one. So I I'm not suggesting here which one it should be, could be two, could be three, three is the maximum right now with the bonuses. Uh, but I'm saying, you know, let's say that instead of saying, well, here is one, and then you can, you can get to two or to three. By doing these things, which I've already mentioned, in my view, the current program is not. Really uh, giving the city things that it should be asking for. Uh, as benefits. And so uh, establish, just, you know, whatever the base is, just establish it higher than that one point zero. And then, uh, this is something that I'm not necessarily saying we should do right now, but it's something that I would like. If possible for you to consider. Uh, a potentially uh, a potential uh, fee based. Bonus system that applies only to hotels, which is one of the permitted uses in this in these districts. Uh, so, uh. Above the base of F L R. Uh, the additional rooms that you get. Being able to stuff in that box that is larger now. Uh, you pay a fee for. So, um, that's just another way that you see could benefit from a financial. Contribution, if you will. From the development, it will have to be evaluated further to see whether, you know, it makes sense from the financial standpoint. Or not just for the city, but for a developer, right? Because. What we want to do here is not necessarily put in place new barriers. To entry into uh, the city. So, but you know, like, again, in trying to balance the. Desire to. Become more attractive for developers, while at the same time. Getting the city benefits from development. That's sort of what I'm trying to do. And then.
But there are unintended consequences to this, I mean, as part of the.
Sure.
Incentivization to a developer to maximize. Their investment, does it come at a cost of something that the surrounding community is like, oh, I don't have to provide as much parking as. I otherwise would have, right? So then, that's an incentive, so can you please clarify that?
Yeah, but guys, if you're talking about the floor law ratio and the and the parking uh, uh. Factor calculation, no, it does not alleviate the requirement to provide parking insurance ratios. Uh, what it does is simply that when you as a developer are calculating how much. Box you have. It's gonna be. A better proposition because you're not counting your structure parking against that.
Well, that should help.
Yes. Yes.
So that's why I brought it up, because I think that's an important thing, we want, we we want to incentivize. Right, for them to be able to maximize their investment, but we just don't want it to come at a cost of. The things that are important to the surrounding community.
Yeah, it does not exempt. The development from meeting the parking environment for the Sony district or for the users.
You have any provisions both for public space?
I have, I have some some stuff come. Alright, are there any questions or comments about the the?
Are are all of these things, before you move on from this, are all of these doable? In terms of like.
Yeah.
That you can come back and say like, hey, if you.
Except for the last one perhaps, but the others, yes.
Okay, so the same logic applies, you're going to make us, when we're on board, but you're gonna make the recommendations of what is is feasible to get.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, uh, still on this topic. This is where, you know, people may actually start, you know, getting a little scared, but. We have a very low density. Or density, uh, yeah, uh, cap here. Uh, in this Sony district, twenty units per acre. One of the reasons, I I have no doubt. Why developers are not looking at this area, among others. Uh, and so what I am suggesting is that we um. Either decide to go ahead and do it or explore a little more. The possibility of creating a density based incentive. Uh. To replace the F A R uh, bonus uh, in center or or a program. And the way that this works would be that we keep the base as it is now, twenty units per acre, but then we have a series of tiers. That provide additional density, some bonus. And it's not free, developers would have to pay into. Uh, uh, fund the city to get that density. I'm not, I'm not tied to these numbers that are in this table, but. I would suggest to you. That for the city to be um, an attractive proposition in terms of units. And of course, we haven't talked about the charter yet, but.
Okay, can you, can you clarify something? When you say that the density cabinet, wanting the basis to units per acre, that unit, are those specific to? Residential, is it, what what is considered?
Density is a measure of 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 residential, of the number of residential units. For a certain. Measure of land.
One, one thing, so then this is a shift, right? Because we have, to this point, I've been talking about. General things, citywide, that are just streamwise, streamlining of our.
Well, no.
Procedures.
Yeah, no, not, not all of them.
Not all.
Some of them, but in the previous slide where we were talking about F A R, F A R versus F L R, that's specific to these two districts.
Okay. Does it apply to the other districts that are similar, like the the overlay to the central business district?
Hmm, it would, it would not.
Or you're proposing this only for Southeast Springs?
Right now, definitely, and and I don't think that it would apply to.
Okay, so then, so then.
This would be right now, something that would be in the uh, gateway, I'm sorry, not in the gateway. In the Southwest thirty-sixth street district and the Abraham track and. It doesn't even have to be in all of the subsongs, you know, we can, we can decide that, but. Right now, I'm thinking it would be in all of the subsongs, but perhaps, you know, looking further at them, maybe, maybe it's not.
Okay.
I don't, I don't wanna overcomplicate.
Some of these are gonna be, so all of these are specific to Northwest thirty-sixth, the Southeast Spring.
Yes.
And and you're not necessarily. Uh, recommending that we do it across the entire Northwest thirty-sixth street district and the Abraham track. We may decide to do it just in certain segments or zones within that district, and that's yet to be determined. But these are chips that can be played.
Yes.
Okay, Vice Mayor, did you have a comment?
I just think that, I'm clarifying that to the public, because. So I think this is, this is to activate Southeast Miami Springs, just our sixth street. And then different zones that you were talking about. Lower down the line, are we talking about aside from, you know, expediting? And streamlining process and clearing ambiguous language that the uh, on our zoning. That costs about downtown, because me personally, that's why I brought it up, there's nothing, it's just, aside from improving our downtown by having more, you know, pedestrian uh. Traffic in the sense of people walkability and aesthetics and better businesses for people to utilize. No one is talking about our heart and soul. So please be clear that we're talking about putting an area that's. It's been a nice workforce. And there's gonna be different zones and we'll talk about it. I mean, personally, I don't think it should be across everything, but we'll talk about it as a department.
I I think that uh, with that clarification, I can add that uh, the notice requirements. The boards, the consolidation of the boards. Uh, and possibly the administrative adjustment. I'm gonna say those would be things that would be available across the board, but even the. Administrative site plan review, I would not necessarily say that we do that citywide. That process, I think that it is appropriate for these districts. But I would not necessarily want that to be available to the gateway or to the.
So that'll be the decision that you will make when you make our recommendation.
Yeah.
Yes, alright.
Uh, likewise, this uh, this tool that I have on the screen is. Uh, specific to the Northwest thirty-sixth street district. It's not even uh, necessarily.
Or segments of it.
Or or segments of it, yes, because we haven't talked yet about the fact that maybe there's no residential and so of those. There's a bit, so, but for whatever zones end up having or subsongs end up having. Still the ability to have a residential, multi-family residential as part of the mixed use or the used mix. Uh, I would suggest to you that a maximum density of twenty units per acre is never going to attract a developer. And so I think that we need to consider what that number is. I have, you know, a. Just for illustrative purposes on on the screen, a table where the last tier goes all the way to a hundred units per acre. That's, that's a big difference, but we have three, three tiers in which you would do, you know, this, so we go from the first to, from the base to the first. You would pay into that fun for for each one of the additional units that you get out of having that bonus. And then within the second, the, I'm sorry, the first and the second uh, tier, you pay again for those units and. Um, one municipality that Heidi and I work in that has similar system, has a flat fee for all of the tiers. But we don't have to do that, we could do it differently here. Uh, I have, you know, two alternatives here. One is uh, where you would have the lower, like a lower B for the first tier, and then it goes up. The other one is reversing that, you know, so that it's actually uh, um. Um, more uh, attractive to a developer that is looking to go up to that highest density bonus. To not have to pay as much for that tier as for the the lower ones. So, you know, I am not suggesting which way to go here today. Uh, it needs to be analyzed further, but I would. Like the council to please consider the fact that additional density is likely necessary in. Some portions of the Northwest thirty-sixth street district. If we are going to um. Uh, customize some of these sub areas to accommodate and attract mixed use. With multi-family.
Which, that was a stated goal, right? After we had our fir- first workshop, we as a council gave direction to. Uh, turn the Northwest thirty-sixth street district uh, and consider different zones. Because they had different characters and and then different needs and and which will necessitate different rules. Right? But we also, one of the things that we said we would do is that we would ask the, you know, this project. Uh, because of the market analysis, right? It said that the two strongest markets are hotel, which obviously we have hotel, right? Uh, and the other one was residential and uh, mixed use. Uh, in particular, we said we, we wanted to try to attract uh, some residential and that, we, I think we all understood that that. And and especially what you're telling us, like, in order to do that, there's certain things, if if we're going to pick a particular area. Where we want to incentivize uh, a strong residential market. You know, a a base density of twenty units per acre is going to be prohibited. Right? So that means that I I think we all were under the understanding that that we're going to have to. Uh, in order to incentivize uh, some residential and some increased residential density. Wherever we decide to put it, and that's still to be debated, this is how we are going, or is it an option for how we can?
It's, it's, yes, it's one way to do it.
Twenty is what we've had.
Twenty is what you have to do.
So, right. But that's, but we wanna, we may wanna keep twenty.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Eleven, we, we.
Yeah, yeah, I I'm not suggesting that the entire uh, uh.
Right.
And 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 again, this is for the Northwest thirty-sixth district alone, right?
And even.
Twenty units per acre.
Even within the Northwest thirty-sixth district, right? The direction we gave is that we will try to. Find an area where we want to. Incentivize and and concentrate that and then make exceptions from. The, 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 the caps in the rest of the.
Reason why I'm keeping twenty in this area, whatever area, you know, ends up being, you know, the higher density of bonuses. Maintain that twenty as the base uh, density.
Right.
Because it's gonna be in the other portions.
Right, okay, so just important to kind of eh, explain it to the layperson that this is eh. If and when we decide to identify an area where we want to. Uh, incentivize, increase density residential, because that's a strong market that. That that this is one way that we can do it.
And again, you know, all the numbers in this table are completely made up right now.
This is just.
Just for for people who maybe uh, behind me or uh, in at home. Uh, none of these numbers are necessarily.
And this is just one way to do it, right? We've been doing it with F A R bonuses. Versus.
But, but, but that does not necessarily affect that.
Doesn't affect it, that's.
Um, Mayor, I.
Sure, yes.
I know this is an example. Is. Is the thought process to go on a per. Uh, sort of bonus, height bonus square foot, anything like that? Or is it a straight unit base? Or are we not there yet?
Not quite.
Okay.
Yeah, not quite there.
Okay.
I think it's probably, I mean, you know, I I don't wanna overcomplicate. Whatever we end up proposing, you know, I mean, there are all kinds of ways of doing this and some of them are really sophisticated or complex. I I don't think we have to go there, you know, uh, uh, baby steps.
Or or let's focus on what we wanna do and and then we'll focus on how we're gonna do it.
It's a.
Okay. Were there any other comments, people?
Alright, uh, I mentioned the public benefits program, to me, this is really important and this is not necessarily across the board, it's, it's, it could be. But I think it's, it's specific to these districts. Because both of them uh, have had that F A R bonus system with some um. Um, items that are meant to be benefits. But I don't think they quite make it to that level. And I think that this would be a better way for uh, development uh, rules. To get you as a community, something that you can really use. So uh, through. The process of development agreement, negotiation, or a public benefits. Um. Agreement, uh, you can, uh, you can uh. Work with a template. To determine from these kinds of benefits that as a city, we are looking for. This is what this development is going to provide us. And that, you know, we'll talk about what those might be in a moment, but this is sort of like a step by step. Uh, process, uh, I'm going to, you know, if you decide that this is something that you wanna do, rely a lot on. Y C O to help me have a lot of experience in this. Uh, and so, you know, but but it also requires some, some steps for the city to take. Because uh, once uh, these, uh, what, what, once the program is in place. And agreements are signed, somebody has to be track of them, somebody has to keep track of the money and how it's used and how it's spent, because there's money involved, right? Um. And so, uh, you know, there are things that, that, that need to be done on the city side before we even get to. The adoption of an ordinance. And.
And so coupled this general remarks, um. Development agreements, community benefit agreements can bring in significant sums of money into the city. Um once you've created an environment for it about. Um by way of example, Sunny Isles, Sunny Isles Beach. Um received millions and millions and millions of dollars as a result of their uh development activity. Uh other cities are experiencing similarly and you are essentially creating. An entirely new part of your government to manage this and so. I would not suggest creating that staff now or or creating a larger government. Now, like that development may never come, right? So um. But when it does come and that money starts trickling in, you have to be prepared to have the infrastructure. Um in your finance department, in your planning, legal, so that all uh public works. And all of these departments working together to implement these millions of dollars potentially that are coming in. And you are effectively running another business within your city solely focused on. You know, just receiving these funds, spending them, expanding them properly. Um in compliance with the development agreements that you ultimately enter into in compliance with state law for their impact fees. So it's not a today issue, but I just wanna keep that in the back of your mind. That ultimately you will have to have not just one staff person, it is not a one-person job. Depending on how much comes in, okay, but it has a tremendous effect on the people who are working on the ground. And all of these departments, so just not a today issue, just keep it.
No. He has the demand and the climate.
Yes.
For that.
That's a very important observation that Heidi is uh making and that's part of the reason why in that. Slide that I just kind of switched over to the next one, uh I had it like a like a plan. This is, these are like the different things that need to happen and you don't have to do them all at once, but you need to know that those things have to be done. So with that, yeah.
Again, you will apply, you know, how essential and feasible. The things that are recommended where you're gonna prioritize those recommendations that are most essential and most feasible. Given our goals and the time.
I think I think the um the adoption of the community benefits or public benefits or development agreement uh provision. Is really important to this process and I would suggest that that should happen. Regardless of other things, um as part of some of those other amendments that we were talking about. Uh we can do that and we actually have a structure in place because again, we did put. Development agreement, the whole section of how how you get done, how you get it done, who does it, you know, how is this included? In the gateway district already, so we have a model, we can adapt it. Um uh and I think that that we can at least begin to prepare the ground. Uh fairly easily. With that said, one of the steps is to decide what kinds of benefits. I mean, like, there are communities that just kind of sort of wing it, you know, it's like for this one, we're gonna ask for this and for this one. But if you know what priorities you need to be trying to fund, then you can establish those goals. And the implementing um pieces in the development agreement to negotiate on behalf of those holes and that could include anything. That is on this list I have on the slide right now or other, you know, I didn't really put. Uh workforce housing or affordable housing on the list because I know that that's not necessarily something that the cities is going to do. But it is very common for that to be one of the major goals of community benefits programs in other cities. Uh but for 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 you, for examples, you know, it's very good, you know, does the city have a social preservation fund? You could you could establish that and you could put money into that. Uh you know, there's other funds that you could create if you don't have them, you know, for example, for um for uh the uh. Uh improvement and maintenance or even acquisition of land or parks and recreation. Uh treaty canopy, uh traffic calming and infrastructure improvements, uh sewing facilities. Um uh programs, uh grants, you know, uh so all kinds of, all kinds of things. That the funding that comes from those uh community contributions can go towards. And and the 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 good thing is that it is, it is sort of a general fund, it's not tied to something specific.
Okay, Catherine.
Um. I I agree, I view it, so I think it's a great program, but I'd also like to see something baked into natural design and on the Corrigan's has where. We require breezeways, plazas, et cetera, so we as residents can interact with it. My fear is that once again, so we give them all its density. And then we create this great wall for Miami Springs along Thirty Sixth Street. Uh so we're just replacing one for the other, it's just one hard edge to the other, so I'd like to see something we can, as residents, we can interact with. Of course, you could write by, you could just swap.
Right.
But something we can leave in and out of it and benefit from as well.
I agree with you entirely and I think that that would be something that we can bake into. The development, the the site plan requirements or the 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 site plan planning uh design.
Are you thinking like the underline, something like that? Um connects communities through unused public space?
Yeah, but but that's a much bigger, I mean, deep coordination, it's might take years to develop, I'm talking about. Um for example, in Coral Gables, you know, the really large buildings always have a breezeway that we can walk from one side to the other or. Where it's just not a box and we walk around it where we interact.
And you know, uh now that you mentioned it, we uh for for the gateway ordinance, we included a pretty substantial. Um set of um side design. Standards and architectural standards as well, and so I think that we can look at that and like like the general principles of it and see. You know, how we can uh uh adapt uh to um to this um. District or or both districts.
I feel like we're giving you so much homework for the six and you know, it's two and three.
No, I mean, like, I I think I think I'm gonna be okay in terms of prioritizing, I mean, like, as long as you don't ask me to write the ordinance. It's between now and then.
We're relying on your judgment, okay, if it's it's if it's kind of spread or stupid.
No, because, I mean, this is okay, mayor, because, you know, I myself have already been thinking in terms of like, how how do I. Do a hierarchy of, you know, what needs to happen first, what needs to happen second, so it's actually gonna be very helpful for me and I hope to you as well. I I tend to think in terms of matrixing, so.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, like we mentioned before, this feels handle man.
Yeah.
I don't think it's, well, you're gonna have more work on your hands, but something that is not gonna bother you from what the overall goal is, because it's important.
Yeah.
We started last council about the impact fees, which we're gonna get a little bit more of updates around the corner. And things take time, is where, you know, antiquated and our just our study is not up to date stuff, so it takes time. But doesn't mean that you don't implement something that you know is gonna benefit even if it's ten years from now. Things have to be in place to date for the future ball, but realistically, we're, I mean, obviously, we wanna see an impact earlier. The point is, we don't wanna see is fifteen years later after something has been implemented in Zoney, which was done. And we had no major impact. So I'm not there to give a timeline, I just know that things have to be improved to get us there. And these are all the steps that need to be.
Yeah, you you make a, you make a really good point, uh that's what I'm and I would like to sort of um. Uh tie into it uh in the sense that, you know, we are going to put together a series of amendments to the code. And, you know, you pass them as presented or you make, you know, different uh decisions about them. But they should not be static because we're testing, we're testing, right? And so, you know, there might be uh moments in which, you know, you you will realize, well, maybe we need to tweak this. So just just kind of wanted to put that out there because people sometimes think that the moment that you adopt something into the code, that's it. You know, it's done, but you constantly have to be looking at, you know, conditions on the ground, how things are changing. When it's, you know, something that you put in place is actually looking, right? And if it isn't, you know, you you're doing it now, but this these regulations were adopted in twenty eleven. And here we are still this time later, nobody tweaked them because they were. Just kind of want to tweak that one. Even if it was some colleague of mine that I don't know from C G A that I think that was involved in that, in that ordinance, but way back then.
All right, so before we move on to the last slide, I just wanna make a distinction that while a lot of the things that are listed there. Um for example, uh upgrades or new new facilities, um. The benefits and and development money that I'm conceiving of here is.
How is like?
No, well, does not have the same constraints as impact fees. So impact fees, the way we use those funds, it's not, hey, we're getting impact fee money and we can use it however we want. It is regulated by state law and then we will, once we have the 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 study. We will have to do an ordinance to create your impact fee funds types. Um and how they will be, uh the rates that will be set and how it will be used and all in compliance with state law. So when you think of your two pots of money, you're gonna have an impact fee money pot. And then you're gonna have a benefits pot and they can be used differently and I would, I would. Assume that when we have the benefits pot, it can be used more broadly, much more broadly. And you can use your impacting.
Yeah, but the impact fees in direction, leave a lot of money from the general fund.
Yes, they do.
The stuff that had that has been used for stuff that the impact fee will help relieve from roads and the leaves.
Yes, yes, I'm just, I'm just concerned about the limitations.
Capital, new capital, right?
Alright, so now we're gonna. Moving into the zone by zone analysis, I'm not gonna walk you again through the characterization of each one of the zones. I've done that a couple of times, but there's basically four zones and uh what you're seeing here is, you know. Little bit of a shift in some of the boundaries that are based on input that we have received. And I'll walk you through those, but maybe not today, uh but at least, you know, I wanna get to uh the uh. Uh the uh uh conversations with regards to such one, as I mentioned, and hopefully four. So Zone One is what I have in my mind being called Main Street. And that is this uh area which is a uh sort of a block deep. Um two blocks actually, it's actually two blocks, but it's one block deep. Uh between Curtis Parkway and Palmetto Drive and uh the. The dual frontage uh or the devoted uh has these uh parcels on these two blocks. Facing onto Northwest Thirty Sixth, but also on Fairway. And uh that's both good and bad, kind of, you know, creates some situations for development and these uh parcels are relatively small. Uh patterns, you know, smaller parcels and this is the area of the whole Northwest Thirty Sixth uh border. That has uh still uh the uh largest number of original buildings. Older buildings, low-rise buildings and so um with that, I. Frankly, I was a little surprised that this got really good reception, this idea of kind of flipping it on its head. Got really good reception, um and not only at the at the workshop, but also in the uh in the servant. Um and people are like, oh, yeah, that's a great idea, let's 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 do it, let's make uh Fairway the the front. Um and and so, you know, what will have to happen and it's gonna be incremental, it's gonna be over time. But the idea would be to create a new sort of main street character for fair. I know that today you barely imagine it, but you know, uh I would like you to imagine it, you know, with. That that sidewalks, uh trees, street trees, um wood, um. A simulation and uh buildings that front uh on that street on both sides. You know, today we're talking about the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street, uh this. But in one of my recommendations is that the city looks into amending the Airport Golf District too. So at least that portion of it so that you get a true, you know, uh main street scale envelope on both sides.
Absolutely, that's the question.
Yes.
So I'm from the Northeast and um I mean, when I moved down here, I didn't see this. I mean, I saw uh strip malls and strip malls and I think. Can we, we propose the standalone alone buildings that maybe. Uh a resident or someone can buy one day and physically own that property because that is, that eludes people. In South Florida from from owning a a property or selling it or living above it. Is that something that you envision? When you say Main Street, I think maybe most of us here are thinking.
Mixed use with retail on the ground.
But that you you can one day own that bill.
Yeah.
You work and your children can own it and then you and then to your building.
There are, that may prevent it, but you know, I don't, I don't, I don't see why, like, from a regulatory standpoint, I don't see why that would be possible.
How is that different from the the ownership structure now?
It's not.
You're buying it, it's tougher to buy a strip mall, I mean, than it is to buy, you know, a a small. One storefront.
Yeah, we would have to, we would have to figure out, you know, because, you know, like, most of these are parcels that are of a certain size. And that's why you see those, the the buildings are small, but we, but but you know, they're 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 like one parcel, right? Uh so to get that pattern that you're talking about. We may be thinking the uh about, you know, replating some of those properties to split them up into smaller and then we'll have to. Uh kind of think about, you know, looking at minimum lot size, you right now, we don't have a lot of that. In the zone for for that pad, but could you have something like a townhouse development there? We.
On the other side, you're talking about towards the golf.
On on that north side?
Yeah, so I had a question, is that the entirety of the Airport Golf District in the dark green?
In the dark green right now, that's the entirety, yes, yeah. And and I did not so divided because that's not in my scope today.
Wasn't the scope of this, but.
But if the city were to amend it, you know, the amend that district, it could end up being too severe as too, you know.
And I just summarize, right, for 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 the people scoring at home. We, the the charge was to look at Northwest Thirty Sixth Street, which is the name of an actual zone, right? That runs from Curtis Parkway, you know, the that first slide all the way down to the corner. One of the things for this particular zone, so this is all one zone, Northwest Thirty Sixth, Curbs Parkway all the way to the juke, right? As we talk about breaking it into zones, this first zone is from Curtis Parkway to Palmetto. And it's only. That one of south of Fairway Drive, so literally on the north side of Fairway Drive is a different complete district. A Airport Golf District.
Correct.
So while we were looking, as part of the scope of your project, we were looking at all of Northwest Thirty Sixth Street, the district and the Abraham Drive. Right? You have brought to us, well, that first zone, one thing that it's it's kind of. Difficult to envision what you can do because it is so narrow, you're literally just on the south side of Fairway Drive. Between Curtis and Palmetto, what you have proposed is, and and also the frontage to Thirty Sixth Street, it's just what you've proposed. We flip it so that it's facing north and how that interacts with the stuff that's just across the street. On Fairway Drive, which right now happens to be running from Palmetto to about Eldron Hotels. And then some other things and then going north on Eldron, so you hadn't considered. The Airport Golf District.
I I have not done any analysis.
You haven't done any analysis, right? And but this idea of posturing ourselves in this, what we are calling Zone One. And but this idea of posturing ourselves in this, what we are calling Zone One. They, the best way to maximize and the best way to get revitalized Zone One. Right, which for, you know, like we, you're talking, you know, that's where the BKS building where G five is, that. Little strip is to think about how it interacts with. The at least, at least, the things that are along Fairway Drive of the Airport Golf District.
Right, I I would not characterize it as the best. Way, but it is one way in which we completely change the equation of what happens on these. On these uh parcels in in this uh sector of the district. And in order for that. Picture to be complete of this sort of Main Street concept, right, with sort of human scale, you know. Uh I'm I'm suggesting that, you know, maybe here, and again. Not having talked to the city attorney, I don't even know if he's either gonna pass legal muster to say. Okay, a hundred and twenty feet is the maximum type permitted here. Could we modify that so that we don't go to a hundred and fifty, but do a different scale of buildings here? You know, right now we have, most of these buildings are one or two-story buildings. Uh maybe the maximum here, I mean, I think that one or two is okay, but I don't know that we.
We're not talking here, and I'd say in the second, in the penultimate bullet, right, or or set of bullets. We're we're focusing, what is the limit now of stories on buildings and this is, this is, we're not of non-residential. What we have right now is we have along Fairway, we have a bunch of hotels. And then obviously, you have a different kind of set of things and character going up Eldron, but. What what you're talking about here is. The, the how high in the number of stories that non-residential buildings can be, what is it? What is it now? Have we not looked at that?
Not not, uh let let me, let me clarify that. Uh not just non-residential, obviously, this is zoned Northwest thirty six street district today. And in the district today, in this area, regardless of my. Identification of this area as one zone. In this issue today, you can have buildings up to a hundred and twenty feet, including.
How many stories is a hundred and twenty feet, Jen? The Clarion Hotel is is in is in Zone One, right? It has eleven stories, one of the buildings could have several buildings. On on the north side of Fairway, which is in the Airport Golf District. What what is the, there are hotels there, what's the height restriction there, do we know?
Uh I can check that for you.
It strikes me that. It it's probably, I mean, why isn't there anything over two or three stories there?
Because the the district uh height is uh is lower there.
Cause I mean, if we, I always say that because if we've gotten good feedback, if eh an idea that we can consider is. Because you're very limited in terms of what you can do in those very narrow parcels that are along thirty six street and the south side of Fairway Drive. If we flip it so that the frontage is facing Fairway. Then I I think it's important for us to know what, what is the incongruence in terms of what. The height restriction.
Airport Golf maximum height seventy feet.
Okay, so then that's why we don't have hotels that are as tall as the clearing that's right across the street.
And and also.
How many stories is that?
And uh and in this district, you also have the language, which is also Northwest thirty six street. Uh that uh um if you have. Which which is the charter language, if you have two residential buildings or more, then you can also.
But that's interesting to note that 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 charter restriction, that anything that is residential cannot exceed three stories. That's why the town center is three stories, cause that's city one. Well, literally within, on the south side of Fairway, you've got one restriction for non-residential. And on the north side of Fairway Drive, you have literally half. So if you wanted to do some kind of main street, so that Fairway could be something where. You're creating something out of those two districts kind of facing each other. It's just important to know that there's, there it's two different districts and there's an incongruence.
There's 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 a scale issue, right, and I I mean, for me. Um as a planner, when I travel, I'm always looking at the built environment, you know. I'm the crazy person who's looking at the uh. Uh the manhole caps and taking pictures of trees and that kind of thing. But uh. For me, for me, I I'm sure that there are planners who don't agree with me necessarily, but for me. The best scale for an urban environment with buildings that are not low-rise. Is probably between five and seven stories. It's it's something that you can you can still relate to that building. And it creates an envelope and it creates, you know, it it creates that sort of urban fabric. Uh so I was actually suggesting five to six stories here, but seventy feet. On the other side already exists. Yeah, exactly, so it could be so, be so. Uh but again. What this, what this, I just wanted to say that what what I'm suggesting would require to change. The existing building height in. A portion of the Northwest thirty six street district to something more restrictive. Than what exists today. And something that we haven't really talked about is, you know, some. The impact of these bills of have been passed at the state level, SB one eighty, right? Uh so, you know, we we kind of need to figure out, you know, what, how that may limit us and some of the things that we do if. While we end up with more restrictive than what exists today. Which is not, which is not always the case. I think that we're actually trying to. Ease the way with some of these changes actually make it easier, clear, faster, you know.
Centerville one eighty could potentially might restrict a lot of the things.
It could, it could.
Or or actually can because it's it's law of the land at the moment.
Right, right. I I keep I keep looking at. All of these recommendations in terms of what do they actually do? Are they really more restrictive? And I would say. As a planner, that I think most of them are actually not more restrictive, but actually make things look easier. And better, but you know.
So I know that SB one eighty, we spoke about it Monday night, um so it's fresh in our minds, but when we are talking about. Reducing height where a property owner currently has available height. Separate and apart from SB one eighty, that's always something that we on on the legal side will be looking at because you're.
Yeah. Just the reason why I keep saying, you know, I haven't talked to the attorneys about it and I don't know if it's gonna be possible, but it's an idea, right?
So, because I I've always found that it it is weird in the COVID where you don't allow residential height and certain height, yet hotel. Three times the height and same structure, it makes no sense. For reference, so what's one of the big hotels?
The Clarion, the Clarion is eleven stories, the the one of their goal.
So I I understand that they're much smaller units, what would the density at that be, just for reference?
Oh, I cannot even begin to tell exact, I really don't know how many rooms they have. Um but, you know, typically hotel rooms are measured in terms of floor ratio and. Units, essentially, this is, you know, density measure. We can do a version, but it's probably gonna be much higher. Do does someone know how many rooms they have? I I can do the calculation if I can find that information and go back to the acreage.
How many stories is the, is the new hotel development, the. The home two suites that that's being proposed?
No, it's not, it's not a lot. I think it's like seven, six or seven. It it is.
That's definitely in that.
It is in that area. Yeah, yeah, it's 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 not that, it's not that hope.
How how far along is that project?
Uh we, it it's not very far along. We had a pre-application conference with the uh sign team. And we gave them comments and they're working on addresses of comments, which I think is going to put them. I in in the addressing of those comments, I think they're gonna be at the stage where they are submitting their sideline application.
You weren't here and and maybe Tammy and Heidi, you guys were here. There there was originally a hotel. That was planned, um I think for that same.
Correct. It actually was approved.
And it was approved. Is this the same owners and just a different?
The same owner, different uh hotel chain, different model.
Okay, but same, so no change in ownership, just a different develop.
Yeah, the the property appraisal website is down right now.
But I just think if you're gonna reference, some people are getting scared.
Yeah.
It's already available to happen. Either we get the entire street full of transient, you know, people in hotels or private integration.
That's that's the million dollar question in our town, it's like, what do you prefer? People will answer, and we'll speak about it, but. You know, transient has not been very favorable to us.
I understand that, but that's pretty obvious.
That that stretch of Fairway Drive. Between, I know that, I know I know that the zone goes all the way to the east, but if if we look at between Eldron. And uh and uh Palmetto, where you've got that stretch of Fairway Drive that. Um what? So you've got, you've got different height restrictions. Right, in the Airport Golf District on the north side of Fairway versus on thirty six street. But what would need to happen in terms of ordinance changes to. But promote a future that would include it facing, all facing, you know, as you've called it, right? Flip the frontage of what's on the south side of Fairway on thirty six street, flip it so it's facing. The, you know, the south side of the Airport Golf, what what is it that's. Keeping that from happening or what do we have to do ordinance wise in order to promote. Turning it eventually into a Main Street.
Right, so I mean, I there there are a number of things, but I think some of the things that we can do from a regulatory standpoint is to. Kind of flip what we have today on its head, right, or put sideways, I guess. Uh so that uh the uh definition of uh of the front of the lot. Changes and we require that the uh access. The vehicular access and pedestrian access are that the primary are on that frontage. We put in place setbacks that acknowledge that the front is on Fairway. And the rear is on Northwest thirty six street. We uh can begin finding things like, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if this is as far as we were gonna go, like. Truly, truly turning our back and blocking Northwest thirty six street district, for example, with. Or, you know, or a buffer or, you know.
So isn't isn't that already, so I think of the the U T D building, right, or the BKS building, right? Is on thirty six street, really, people are accessing it through the back.
And that's part of the reason why I started thinking about kind of taking this to the next step, to the next level. Because a lot of those buildings, which, you know, are the original, you can see how their facades have been. Completely sort of blocked. On Northwest thirty six, when, you know, it was a different kind of street, probably was a walkable, you know. Street with, you know, wider sidewalks and people. Accessing those buildings from the front, you know.
So it's a parking, so if you're coming down thirty six street and you want to go to Main Street. Is it, can we have parking garage entrance on thirty six street? So let's say behind, behind that beautiful facade is a parking garage.
You could do it.
So.
Do it. Certainly, I mean, like, there's there's a couple of different approaches that you could take. One is that you continue to allow the access from uh Northwest thirty six street, uh you know, with. DOT allowing uh or or permitting those driveways and putting requirements on them. The other one would be to to say, you know, uh we are going to reduce the number of access points that we have. Not by restricting them, but just like sort of the attrition of these developments that. You know, then can come in from this other side. I mean, those are two different approaches, but like that hotel, the home two streets that we were talking about. Uh kind of has that approach, it has, you know, the access from Northwest thirty six street. This, but it's sort of to the side, it's not like in the middle of the, sort of to the side and it kind of goes through to Fairway. And the drop off, instead of being facing onto Northwest thirty six street, is facing inwards. Towards that driveway that goes through. So, you know, that's kind of the reason, uh you know, that that all, this was all in my head, you know, that project. And the pattern that you see today and kind of just say, let's just lean into it, you know. Let's see if we can do something to uh change the path.
I I don't.
Go ahead, question. Well, I think at the end of the day, we're we're coming back to the same thing. I think you're gonna need that golf district to change. I don't know if they are ready to pop up that one. Because it's gonna have back to having a conversation, if you want a little density with. Luxury townhouses, or you want a three-story or four-story apartment building, they're gonna need residents. To really make it successful, to make a decision on doing retail there, they need the foot traffic, yeah. Back to the same thing with foot traffic. So I think to me, like right now, like, I like the idea. I think it looks great, but to get deep into the conversation, it would entail us to talk about. Around our golf, which is sacred to our town, and have that conversation. Here the reality is, we wanna clean up right now.
And and it is hard for people to imagine it because even if one building does it this way, and it could end up being, you know, partially. This new hotel. Uh but then if if others begin taking uh the same model and we put in place the regulations that would sort of force it. Right, it's gonna be, gonna be a slow process, you know, you're still gonna have the roadway, and some of some of the uh. Development is going to look the other way or go, you know, coming from from the Northwest thirty six street district and Fairway is still gonna look. Terrible and, you know, so I know it's difficult for people to visualize these things sometimes. You know, as planners, uh we are very patient because we know how long these things take. Uh but, you know, I I also fully understand that people are getting patience.
But in some ways, I don't think it's so difficult to envision because in practice, even though the front. Is officially on thirty six street, in practice, really, people are going in through in the U T D building, the BKS building and G five. Ev- everybody is going in through Fairway, so I I I understand like that 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 little picture in the log left. I know there's a lot of infrastructure that that we would have to, and that would that would mean that there's a lot of development coming in. So this is kind of long range, what, can you distill it down? Cause I, again, I feel like in practice. We're already accessing those those buildings along thirty six street from Fairway. What do we need to, and and I and I realize that the interaction with the golf district may mean that that may be. A whole nother. And a whole nother thing that we need to look into. So what are the things, again, based on our time constraints and our goals, what's feasible? What is it that we would need to change so that we are on the way towards promoting it? Uh more than just in practice. What is it that you think we would need to do in the short term so that we are in a position? To perhaps down the, in a different council.
I think that the the easiest thing that we can do is to uh tweak the zoning. Uh so, you know, um one of the actions that I have on my my slides at the end is that if we. If if the council decides to move forward with this multi-zone structure. One of the things that we would have to do is decide, are we gonna do this as overlays? Or are we actually going to create these new districts, in which case we'll have to amend the the zoning map.
But when you say tweak the zoning, you mean in Airport Golf or in Zone One?
What would become Zone One, right?
Part of Airport Golf would become part of Zone One Northwest thirty six.
That that's not what I'm suggesting at this point. I think that we probably need to leave both alone until you guys have more time to. Think about it and simulate. Think about it and simulate, uh uh what what that would entail.
So you're prioritizing the things to do in the North thirty sixth street zone one, so that in the future.
Alright.
It may be able to interact more freely with.
Exact.
With Airport Golf.
Exactly, that. So I think again, you know, like what what we can do is to, again, sort of uh really leaning into. That reality that we mentioned. Uh, yeah, the buildings that exist there, even though people may come in from the back, from 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 Fairway. It is the back of those buildings, it is, you know, the loading zone and the parking, and here it doesn't look that great. People, right, I mean, that.
How does that inhibit a development, the fact that the front is officially on thirty sixth street, even though practically. They're going into the back.
I'm not suggesting that it is inhibiting it, I think it's inertia, because those buildings are there and they have been there in that manner for a long time. Uh, but you know, I I just kind of see uh uh that if they were, if they were. If some of these sites were to redevelop. With that front facade on Fairway closer to the street. The parking on the side, we can require it to be, you know, like that same pattern of access that homes uh to streets is posing. Uh, so that's not the first thing, in other words, it's not that suburban pattern where the first thing that you see when you arrive outside is the park, right? Is is more of that main street pattern where the buildings are a little bit closer, you have wider sidewalks where you could accommodate. You know, outdoor uh dining, you know, uh that's one of the suggestions that I'm making, that, you know, we. Uh, think in terms of what that would look like, where we actually can have. In a sort of protective environment as opposed to North thirty sixth, you're never gonna have. I have an outdoor cafe, it's comfortable on that roadway, right? So uh so that's one of the changes that I'm suggesting. Um, you know, sort of on on the permitted use side, so like be a little more specific about the kinds of uses, not to say retail. But just sort of be more targeted. Um, even the possibility is, you were, you were saying, you know, like sort of standalone built uh buildings. Well, there are some uh of those here that could accommodate a restaurant, but a standalone restaurant is not allowed. In the zoning issue, and I think it's because it's geared towards preventing the um. The fast food drive-through pattern, and and that is okay, we can still continue to do that, but there are other types of restaurants. That could be in a standalone building without that kind of um um character right now. So uh so that, the other thing is uh trying to focus on boutique hotels. As a target, boutique hotels are in that scale of, you know, maybe a hundred rooms, fifty rooms, a hundred rooms. So that's a building that could be in that seventy foot uh range of height. Uh, with uh the ability to have uh certain kinds of uh sporting facilities and restaurants and. Affairs and and services that serve not only the guests of those hotels, but also the the ones on the on the next. Zone, right, which is a little more intense. Uh, and the one thing that I have on this list, which is gonna, not gonna be the last time that I mention this. And it may be a little, uh, I don't know, maybe a little controversial, but. Um, this code does not allow and does not consider shared parking. And it does not consider the possibility of counting offsite parking, part of your uh parking application. Uh, I think we all know that this top zone, I think it's defined as such. Um. Many of the sites don't have that. And it's, it's gonna be, well, it's gonna be hard even to provide it uh uh depending on. On what the development, what the uses, you know, and so I think that for the mixed uses, we should be considering. Uh, allowing shared parking factors to be taken into consideration to reduce. The amount of parking, especially if there is uh residential, because the. Um, the the peak hours, the 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 schedules of those uses are totally different. And uh, and so, you know, that's something that I'm putting on the table that I think is. Worth uh considering, for this zone as well as potentially one other zone. Um, maybe even more, but you know, I think this one is the most natural fit for it, because the sites are smaller, because. Um, um, I think again, it's 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 expensive and maybe it's a premium. If these sites have to build structured parking, uh. That is a, certainly is gonna be a factor that that place, I know that when um. When this developer came back with this new iteration of the hotel, they did not want to have any structure parking. And they were just going to build the hotel up, put all the parking underneath, like it was just like a palace, you know. And I was a little horrified, because there's absolutely no interface of that building with the street. Regardless of the quality of those streets, right? Uh, and I I kind of insisted that they went back and tried to think of a different way to do it. Uh, now they're putting some structure parking, but the building is still, you know, not exactly.
Is it defined as a parking?
Structure parking is a parking garage.
Okay.
Right, and 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 that's really expensive, it's really expensive, I mean, I don't even know what the current, the. Average cost of a parking uh space and structure uh parking uh.
There there's not a lot of public parking available there, so I don't, so shared, shared with who?
Well, it would be shared, shared, if 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 we are allowing mixed use, it would be shared internally, right? It would be shared internally, so if you have a restaurant on the ground floor, but you have residential units on the top. There is a factor by which you may be able to reduce some of the parking. Uh, or if it is, you know, I the 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 factors are different depending on the 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 uses that you have in that way. Uh, but the possibility is also that, you know, you could. Through some kind of agreement that, you know, your attorneys can help uh structure, that. A development could have a shared parking agreement with. Another development that has extra parking. Uh, or that.
Ask a question.
Sure.
That I think will be informative, they will go inform us that. But I wanna point out that mixed use doesn't have to be residential, you could have mixed use, so.
With your office and restaurant.
There is another project coming in on the corner of East Drive and thirty sixth street, which is gonna be mixed use, it's gonna be office, hotel.
Yes.
Uh, restaurant, what are they doing for parking? In terms of.
They are building, they are building a restaurant, that's a, it's a larger scale project.
Right, it's a larger project, but they are building a lot.
They are, yeah.
But, mature, back to what you were talking about earlier, the change of how you're calculating bar from quarter ratio. Obviously, with the hair, because we're using the gentleman who's applying for this hotel now and applying with our current zone.
Yes.
Well, obviously, he has subscriptions in his hand right now, so if he's thinking, well, I can't, I'm not gonna leave these. But it's, you know, that feature, that's why it's important that we do this, no matter, you know, what it is, but. Like I itself, if we done different.
Yeah.
There is.
And again, you know, I I haven't done full analysis to this, uh we have shared parties. Or even offsite parking, you know, that's another thing, there are uh, there are instances in which, you know. Uh, I'm just even kind of thinking, like, they are gonna pass an enormous surface parking.
Oh, we're self-medicating.
Making sure everybody's awake. The fairing has an enormous surface parking, and if you look at it, most states it's not. You know, could put in in this scenario, a new development nearby within. I don't know, five hundred feet. Be allowed to enter into an agreement with them to use some of their parking. And count it as part of their parking that they cannot provide on site.
And we currently restrict that?
We don't have any provisions for that to happen.
Okay.
Okay, so that's important. That's happening right now, depending whether or not, so we'll see how that works.
Right.
Would the city run a parking garage and charge for that? Is that a possibility?
City, I mean, if the city owns some land, they still have a garage.
That would require purchase of land.
You're right. Uh, certainly, I mean, like, you know, community contribution fees, at some point, you may want to look into buying one of those. Smaller parcels and looking at building, you know, a relatively small, it's not cheap, though, it's it's it's.
Can I just share something that I experienced, so if you're familiar with Coral Gables. Between, if you go down La June, you pass Savannah Harry's and uh between La June and Ponce. Right along US one, there's this narrow and and you could just totally see how it's exactly like the the. Plot of land is just like what we had uh there along along thirty sixth street in Zone one. And that's where they did the lifetime living, that is, you're familiar with it, and they've got a, the Trader Joe's is right there on the corner, it's all part of that development. And it's a narrow strip of land, but they were able to do it, and they had a breezeway, and we were. There's the Gracianos there, and we're there, and like, there's literally six lanes of US one from here to the wall. Just a couple of feet away, but yet they were able to do something there, and it was, I I it was like, wow, they were, we can do something, right?
Because the city is on the side.
Right, but but the front, the front, I'm sure that at some point, the front was US one.
Yes, exactly.
Right, but now the front.
You can still see, yeah, it's inside Gracianos, if you sit. You know, it's there.
And if you drive past US one, but that's not the front anymore, so it's flipping the orientation of it so that the development could make use of. So I just, that just struck me as something that, something can be done, even though it's very narrow. And it's it's a budding a six-lane highway that 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 is, uh, you know, has. Uh, bad traffic there, there is things that, and then you can attract. You know, restaurants and a Trader Joe's, right, like, I feel like that, that, when I was there, I thought, wow. There is stuff that you can do with, and you're very limited in terms of the, how narrow the parcels are.
Yeah. Alright, I I think this is all I have for this, but.
So are you, are you also gonna make recommendations in terms of the things that we can do to put this.
To me.
Zone in the best position.
To me, the majority of this is going to be um. So me.
Okay.
Right, uh, the 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 two or three things that are not, uh, include amending, well, it is, but. We're not gonna do that, I'm ending the Airport Golf district, because we're not touching that. Or for sometime later, and then uh the uh city investment and capital improvements. For the road to actually become what it should be, Fairway Road, and.
But that comes as needed, if development requires it, right? Like, do we need to do any road road improvements or or capital improvements in order to allow.
It depends. Yeah.
Sweet's project?
I mean, you know, um, if you wanted to be a city, if you wanted to be really aggressive in. Welcoming development, pursuing development, you could put that infrastructure in place. Not necessarily to say, oh, look, now this is Main Street, right, but you know, whatever. Uh, defense, the road has, I know that there's some flooding and, you know, like sidewalks. Would be better, like, you could begin to do some of those improvements, uh start thinking in terms of like, you know, what kind of. Uh, landscaping you could do, you know. Uh, not necessarily that it has to happen, but you know, we're trying to prepare that street for that to happen, so that it is real. When somebody comes and looks at it, and then they they can say, okay, I can see, I can see that this is. Is is something that the city is serious about.
That way would require forward funding.
It would, and that's why I'm saying that my, my, my prioritization here is not. That, because the city would have to do a whole other process.
Okay.
And um, and if you think of the existing buildings and whether, you know, those could be encouraged to. Uh, upgrade or improve, uh then there's there's a third bullet there that I have, which is, you know, how you encourage. Investment in those existing buildings from the existing property owners, which could include, uh, you know, facade, uh improvement grants. From the city, you know, so there's like program, programmatic things, and I'm not prioritizing that.
So just to add on on what you're saying about the uh infrastructure improvements. One of the things that the developers could do, is instead of the city taking on the burden of. Performing those improvements itself, the developer can do it, and basically. You would work out an agreement where they would get a credit against the impactings that they would otherwise pay you, so.
One important caveat for that is that road impact fees. One important caveat for that, and it's something you need to work with the county on, is that road impact fees are collected by the county. And so the credit, because these are road improvements, would be applied to that, so. That's something worth, maybe worth talking to the county that makes, see if we can streamline that process. Uh, moving forward.
Yes, thank you, I think we're great, but. Okay, uh, moving forward. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this slide, because I just said that this is not necessarily my priority. Uh, but please, I just some of the potential actions that city could take to. Uh, encourage the retention and improvement in the existing buildings and uses. So I'm just gonna skip over, I had a couple of slides that just kind of talked about, you know, uh, types of. Things that you could be thinking of in terms of specifying the kinds of hotels through the zoning, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this. Either, I already kind of thought about, and then, you know, I had a slide about, you know. Shared and offsite parking, and then a couple, you know, I I actually did think in long term, maybe, you know, the city can have a. Garage on of its own, maybe it's not in this some, but maybe it is in the district, you know, somewhere central to. More than one zone, um, and even thinking uh about, you know, parking benefit district, which is. Um, you know, uh, like designated area where um. City can generate uh uh revenue from uh meters, for example, you know, but that's not for today. Uh, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about the pre-standing restaurants, but I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on this. And again, you know, the only thing I would say is that this would be sort of a carve-out. Uh, for some kinds of restaurants, not including, right, the. Fast food restaurants, which is I think the reason why that exclusion was made in the first place. And restaurants are only permitted today as part of buildings with other uses. Alright, just uh not gonna spend too much time on this, but I wanted to um show you some of the uh public input that we received. From the survey on someone, because we specifically asked people, you know, how do you feel about these ideas? And uh, these are some of the things that people said, these opportunities look great, better transportation for travelers, lodging in your own hotels. I agree, focus on retail restaurants or hotels, uh leaving the charter high restriction in place for residential, which is a great idea for this area. Include both Fairway Drive and thirty sixth street equally, uh they mentioned the route. Uh, one individual, one respondent mentioned the route several times in their responses to uh various questions. And it's interesting, because they, the the uh forty first street uh unification master plan was actually done by my firm. As well, and it's it's only now, it's been a while, and it's only now been, you know, starting to uh come to fruition. So just to, again, emphasize how long uh some of these things can take. Uh, they talked about working with Virginia Gardens, uh. Maintaining the charter height, somebody mentioned that again, uh. There were a few responses where this was a little repetitive, but you know, it was like avoid live work units. That's not, that's not the kind of resident that we want. Somebody who's gonna, you know, somebody's gonna have at the two shop, and live across uh 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 above the shop, but you know, I mean, it could be something completely different, right? Um, so anyway, um, I I wanted to be very transparent about all the kinds of input that we have received, including. Uh, the kind of input that is extremely negative. Uh, the kind of input that is extremely negative to all of the ideas, so there you have it. And the, the only thing that I will say about that is like, that was the response that was, uh, provided. I'm assuming by the same respondent, because it was exactly the same with several of these questions and. And it's interesting that it says that the residents simply do not want more development. And, uh, you know, no one wants this and blah blah blah, and yet the list of input. On the bullets above it suggests others.
I I think to address the point of more traffic. I mean, the traffic will be strained to thirty six street and just within that house, everybody living and working there, I'd see them coming. Even the center.
Well, that would be the idea. That was something.
I would think that parking would be, uh, a bigger issue than than the traffic.
Yeah, and possibly, um, but, uh, we we can, we can work on. Alternative paths to try to solve them, so you just saw me, uh, uh. You know, click through.
So just to put a a bow on zone one, because we're moving to zone four, again, you're gonna prioritize the things that we're gonna do now, that's not gonna derail things or slow us down. That'll put us in the best position, you move them both.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, okay, so I'm gonna jump over to some for for today. Uh, these recommendations that I have on this slide are not that different from the bullet points that I have. Uh, few weeks ago, when I came before you, these are still the things that I think we need to do. Uh, I think that this one requires the adoption of a planned development type of zoning. Uh, but still, we can refine the permitted uses, kind of be a little bit more targeted and the kind of aviation related. And therefore adjacent issues that are encouraged to come here. Um, and, uh, with the, the, the good news that workforce housing is. A a use that can, uh, engulf in this area now. I think that, uh, that we need to make sure that we include that in the zoning. Um. Showing district regulations.
What is it currently zoned for?
Uh, well, it's mostly light industrial, uh, aviation related. And and hotels. Uh, the only thing that is big, big, big in this zoning district, it's the only one in the city, um, to now include that is, uh, adult, uh.
Oh, well, maybe we'll go away.
Right. Um. And then, uh, the last, the three bullets, actually, I don't know why there's a change in bullet on the last one, but. The last three bullets are not zoning necessarily. Uh, one, uh, action that the city could be think, thinking about to do proactively, although I. Would not necessarily suggest that we try to do it without some conversation with the property owners is the abandonment of. Number seventy six, uh, number seventy first street. They suggested that they would like to see that. Uh, it could be that they, you know, I told them, you, if you come in for a cycle, you could do it yourself. Uh, but you know, again, it's just, um, a couple of different approaches, right? In 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 some instances, uh, communities that are trying to attract around will take proactive action on some. Uh, uh, some areas, for example, infrastructure capital improvements, uh, maybe something like this. Uh, but then, if you want to make sure that development is actually happening before you, uh, invest in these things, then we. Way to see. Um, and then, aside from that, here also very, very critical for the city to. Maybe start planning for investment in, uh, in improvements to the infrastructure. Uh, and this, uh, and this sub zone for stormwater, for, um, mobility, uh, sidewalks in particular. Uh, street trees and that kind of thing. And, uh, for that, uh, obviously you have to be working with Miami Dade County. Uh, to improve South River Drive and with F B R T to see what. Ultimately can be done to improve the connectivity of this area to the rest of Miami Springs. Uh, and also frankly, to the, to the, uh, Miami Terminal Center, because it's just so close, you can, you can see it. You cannot touch it, uh, because it's just, uh, it's just a pretty, uh, difficult, um, track from there.
Whole area of south is. It's gonna do.
And, you know, and I think that this area has to be, it has to be connected in a better way to the south. It's it's just natural.
Connected to. So what's happening.
To Lake Palmer.
Right, the Lake Palmer and to that.
Like right now, to walk. And I tried that, you know, the day that I kind of went to, uh, visited, uh, a side visit and I went and I, I took photos and I was. Trying to test that, and could you walk from the Abraham Track to, to, uh, the, uh, the Intermodal Center and. It's just really scary frankly, you know, because you're walking on the street and, you know. Uh, so, you know, grass is grown and all of that, so.
But it's certainly more feasible than trying to connect it to the mainland, right, uh, of Miami Springs. Because that's something that comes up in conversation a lot, right? How can we connect it with like, with the new, I mean, there's no.
Yeah.
There's no way to really walk from those hotels to, you know, the Playa Torrida, I mean, I guess you could, but that's.
I think.
I think we should leverage what you're saying is having it connect to the development and everything, because that's an area that's like booming now. Because of the Freedom Park, the soccer stadium was happening in Palmer Lake.
Yeah.
Uh, integrating it with that, can I ask a question? Uh, and you may have explained it, and I I came in right, that first bullet, could you define for me adult planning development, and my second question is. As we update and refine permitted uses, uh. Can we get rid of the adult entertainment use? We cannot.
No.
I think nobody.
I was kind of going to say that you can be.
Isn't that already zoned across the street? Isn't that, isn't that, isn't there a location just for that type of business across North River Drive?
I mean, you mean not in Miami.
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's already, not that I know that it's there, but. I've driven by, a friend of mine told me, so it doesn't touch us, right? It doesn't, um, it doesn't.
So to be clear, the things that are on the north side of. South River Drive, or is that North River Drive?
Yeah, North River.
Okay, so the things that are on the north side of North River Drive, so the concrete plant. And, uh, what used to be the park and ride, we know that the, you know, on the other side of the railroad tracks, that's not even, but. That does not belong to the city of Miami. The concrete plant is not.
I I know that there is an adult entertainment facility across the street.
Further, it's not across the street from us, right?
No, it's, no, it's not.
No, it's it's further down, you gotta get past the railway tracks.
Yeah.
It's on. It's faster over there.
Yeah, but.
To the general point of, uh, regulating adult uses, uh. You, first of all, with respect to existing uses, you're, you're gonna face a lawsuit if you just outright ban it and you totally have to shut down.
You cannot.
So you can't do that.
We don't have it currently.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying in general, like, if someone was there, okay? Um, you can regulate the use, strict prohibitions are where you come into, uh, constitutional problems. So, there's a very famous case, for example, um. And I gotta look at the case law again on what the final verdict was, but in Miami Beach, a very famous case of a strip joint there. What was done was they said, okay, you can have your strip joint, but you can't have alcohol.
Where, where there's complete nudity, right?
Now, Miami Beach is the kind of place where, okay, that's not a problem, we'll find the alcohol somewhere else. In other communities that might be more of a restriction, more restrictive and make it less, make your community less attractive. Um, to that use, it also protects your community from a lot of the other vices that come along with those uses. I know, some of the other crime issues and other concerns.
Did we inherit those uses when we annexed that area, is that why?
No, I doubt it. I I don't know the history, but I I doubt it, it's very likely to.
Uh, actually, our partner Susan Trabarthan worked on this with your prior city attorney, uh. Like, twenty years ago, it's not more, um, so I think we would. If we're gonna address anything related to that, and and as part of just updating the zombie, we will look at it.
Right.
But she was, she was part of it.
You you can see that on this slide that I have. Uh, on the screen right now, one of the bullet points there is reviewing and updating the adult business regulations if necessary. We can do that, but we cannot eliminate, we cannot eliminate the. Uh, the, the ability to be there, you know, it's gotta be somewhere in the city.
Right.
When you can have that constitutional.
Seems like every American should grow right, to have access.
Would, would like, uh, through the chair, um, or like, uh, whirs or, uh. You know, that type of business, I don't know, there's another one that's similar. They'll bog into that, that we know where you're.
No, no, that would not all the pack of yours, so that's just playing in all restaurant.
Okay.
Yeah. So, um, uh, I I skipped the, I skipped the slide and I'll go back to that in order to respond to the mayor's, uh. First question, but just wanted to, since we are on the, uh, the issue of permitted uses. Uh, here are some of the things that I would love to do. Um, be very laser focused on very specifically targeting, uh. These types of airport related, airport supportive, airports adjacent uses. Uh, that are on the first bullet point, and then, uh, because this, uh, would be. An area where still would have uses that rely on outdoor storage. That we look at putting in place some, um, some better than what we have right now. Mentioned the possibility of updating the adult business regulations, looking at those. And then again, as I mentioned, workforce housing, uh, included in this area. Uh, surely, uh, the, uh, major property owners there had during our meeting that we had, one of those interviews. Uh, had mentioned, if we could put the housing, we would, and at that time, we have said, no, you really can't. Because the airport zoning, uh, prohibits it, but as we found out, uh, not very long ago. It actually, uh, was amended and 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 now workforce housing can go in this particular area. Uh, and then, you know, a whole bunch of other sort of, you know, standards that I I would look to, uh. Kind of establish a framework for, because in the adoption. I don't know why it looks so yellow on the screen, but that's supposed to be green space. Um, the concept of planned development basically is, uh, a tool that provides for the ability to sort of master plan. A large site with multiple, uh, uh, components to a project. And, uh, it it sort of allows, uh, a lot of flexibility, almost creating. Their own standards, but that's why I I would prefer to have a framework within which. Anyone that comes in to do that for us, and of course, this point, it would be only in this district, right? Uh, but essentially, it would be like a master plan. Uh, that shows like, in in this case, you know, a large property where probably would be multiple buildings. And the one thing that would come before you would be the master plan, and then the buildings. The separate individual buildings, projects could be approved administratively, because you already approved the framework. So that's one way to address it, um, and I think that, uh. ED would be a really good tool to have to, uh, facilitate the development of some of the land that is here.
Well, the only side.
It it really is, I mean, hotels, the hotels can 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 redevelop, but it's probably gonna be for the same.
Thing at the end of the day is.
Yeah.
In the area that most people don't even know it's there. And we just, that we put the sonic, uh, or the strip joints and whatever you wanna call it there, because. Nobody knows is there, one of our city, that, but at the end of the day, what we've had in there is that. Ties in the development, so at the end of the day, it's just pretty much make it feasible. So we won't have these layers of obstacles for somebody that wants to do any of these uses that we're talking about. That's the key, so there, I think you need as much restrictions, of obviously you need restrictions, but to the same point, you don't need. We need to tweak what's there, because obviously was there didn't even ties some of those uses.
Right.
But I I think there was, there was nothing happening around it. I I think that this, this area is small compared to everything that's coming in. The, the, the soccer stadium is going to have everything, the Palmer Lake area. I think that, or I, I suspect that what's happening around it is going to also drive what.
I agree.
I feel like we need to kind of take the.
We're trying to get ahead of that happening, putting in place. The infrastructure for the city to be ready to accept. That develops it when it comes, knocking on the door, and to say, this is how we would like to see it. I think that it is a really, really good thing that we have found out that, uh, at least workforce housing is possible there. Because, I mean, like Ed has made the point several times, so, you know, here in 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 Miami Dade County. What you would think of as workforce is actually not a bad position at all by, you know, by by inputs. And by vets, right, so, uh, it's, yeah, it's, 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 it's a really good use to add to this mix. And if you, uh, drive to the south, on South River Drive. Uh, you can see some of the same kind of elements that, you know, there's some like little moments there, you know. To get the hip hotels with their rooftop bar and all of that, you know, that could be, that's what, that's what happens, yeah. So.
I feel like, uh, it's important to embrace what is going into that area, right, with the, uh. Where Freedom Park is really not that far away from Freedom Park.
Not at all.
Before we start, um, you know, taking restrictions away from even the adult area. We should know what the zoning, like, what the restrictions are, like, what constitutes, uh, you know, adult uses. And then we could start working backwards from there, but is, is a nightclub adult uses?
Hmm, not necessarily, no, I mean, like, the code has pages and pages and pages of language that. Uh, define all the, uh, necessary terminology. Um, it 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 is more pages devoted to that particular subject and almost any other subject in the whole. In the entire code, not just the session, so.
Yeah, I mean, that area has changed a lot over the last twenty years.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but again, you know, there isn't any such use within the Abraham Track right now, just to say.
Change hugely underutilized that area, correct?
Yes. Alright, I think that, uh, that's about it, I, like, I did with someone, I just wanted to bring you. You know, verbatim, some of the input that we received through the survey. See, you know, some things that people say, uh, someone just kind of said, I like some four better than. Some three, I think is what they meant, because they didn't want housing on thirty, thirty six street. Uh, and again, the same, the same, uh, sort of, uh, language, you know. Um, residents in O one buildings, town dev, proposals, this is not what we want, that's it. Um, but, you know, other people thought that, you know, encouraging those, uh, industrial uses is, is the way to go. And that workforce housing makes sense, and, uh, you know, that. Again, the sort of infrastructure just say that especially these streets needs to be fixed. As user of that road to get to Miami Springs sometimes, I agree. And then, just to finalize, there's three additional recommendations that I have, uh, one of them is kind of, uh, important related to. These other changes, uh, uh, but the first one is, uh, I mentioned. If when I came to, uh, studio the first time, that there is an area within smack in the middle. Of, uh, the, uh. The northwest thirty six street district that is for multifamily residential, you can see it there in the. The Northwest Thirty Sixth District that is multifamily residential, you can see it there in the, sort of, color. And, um, and I think that we need to consider whether we. Bring that into the fold of Northwest Thirty Sixth Street. Uh, I also have another area that I'm showing there, still, so to the northeast, uh, which we'll talk about at the, at, at, at the next.
So then, yeah, what's the zoning on the multifamily?
It is, is, in, no, it's actually Northwest Thirty Sixth Street.
Okay.
So there is an inconsistency between the future languages and stuff.
What's the consequence of that, of having that?
Well.
Of having you be different and. The future way of use map and.
I haven't done the analysis to see whether, uh, that particular complex is above the density. Allowed in the Northwest Thirty Sixth Street. I mean, it could be nonconforming, but, you know, I don't know.
You, you always want your zoning to match your comprehensive plan. Um, so.
But, but if it is not, I mean, what can we do?
It's, it's required by state law that your zoning in your comp, comprehensive plan be, uh, consistent.
Okay.
So they don't have to, you know, as long as, you have to look at the fine print and see if they're consistent. The name alone is not enough, and that's what Sylvia's getting at. She'd have to do an analysis to see if it's a violation of the statute or not. Um, but usually, if you have one named thirty sixth street. Both of them and, and, you know, as a, a future land use map designation and a zoning usually want to align. It's a pretty safe bet that you're gonna get, uh, comply with the law that way. As to what the real world consequences are, you're not likely to see a lawsuit, to be frank, about that. Unless somebody's denied a permit and they can see some sort of advantage to that. And then another remote possibility is that, uh, has to take some issue with it, but that's very rare. It's heavily rare.
The reason I asked the question, Mayor, is because. Um, you may remember much earlier in the evening, I mentioned that a rezoning requires notice to all of the air markets and so on. I want to prepare for that.
It's a good point that you could have legislation for a page and I have amendment as well as zoning amendments. If the subzone zoning industry structure is. That would represent zoning matching, right? I mean, like, we haven't decided yet whether the way that we're gonna go is to do overlays. Or to adopt, you know, districts, but if the latter, then you would have to commit to the zoning. And that's the, that's the next slide, basically. Um. If that happens. And then finally, here's a recommendation that I would really urge the city to consider, which is. I've talked about the power of, uh, place branding, and I think that, uh. It would be very beneficial, it really would leverage everything that we're doing here. If it is accompanied by a solid, uh, branding and marketing with the campaign to help. Um, sort of embrace this area as part of the city, all, all of it. You know, not just, not just the Abraham Trap, which everybody ignores, but like the whole idea of the southeast, uh, springs. Uh, you know, it is ours and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make it better and, you know, it belongs to us. Uh, and, and somebody can help do that and help you tell the story so that you can sell it. So I would urge the city to consider getting someone to do that for you or with you. And that's about it. I will lead the next steps for the next time.
So, we have an October sixth council meeting. We have an October sixth council meeting that we are going to treat as part two of the workshop.
Not the entire meeting.
Not the entire meeting.
No.
It's a regular council meeting and there, so far the agenda looks fairly light. Um, and I don't think that there's anything that couldn't be moved to the next meeting, so. We'll adjust and keep the, I think, the regular council meeting light so that you can have this sort of discussion again.
We stop.
No, 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 it would be part of, it would just be under other business.
Can we start that meeting earlier? Just because, I mean, I, I would as, I would assume. That talking about zones two and three will take about as long as this took. Um, and if it's as part of a, you know, can we, can we start, we can't start the meeting early?
Of course.
No, because I, I think that if we started seven, we'll, we'll, we won't be able to do it either, if it's part of a broader.
And you're not gonna bring up procedures and streamlining anymore.
We actually did a lot of heavy listening.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
A lot, I mean, but we still have two zones that, I, I know you're gonna be discussing, by the way.
I do, I know we, uh, earlier we're talking about providing the priorities at the October sixth meeting, but perhaps. Does it make sense to complete the discussion as a whole and then?
Yeah, that's, that's why I was saying that we were giving her a lot of homework to have for the sixth, maybe.
I'll prepare, I'll prepare for, you know, I'll begin preparing it, but, you know, maybe look just through it enough.
And, and it would be great if we have, if we have a, if we can follow along with a copy of the presentation so that we can take notes and. Because we're, we're getting to the point where we're gonna say, you know, we decide, you know, we do have consensus that this will then go forward.
Yeah, I will send, uh, Erica a PDF, uh, tonight and she can do it to you. Either tonight or tomorrow. And thank you for giving me three hours.
Three hours and I'm friends, huh? Okay, um, alright, so I think, uh, we are ready, we will at nine seventeen adjourn. My mic is off. We will adjourn this city council workshop at nine seventeen. Thank you, everybody, for coming out.